Everybody, welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole, Monday, July 22nd. Under item one, call to order, 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Frensky.
Here.
Freidols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a form.
Great, we have no informational items. Under item three, discussion items, 3.1, assessment district for newly annexed properties, project 4704, 24, District 14, permanent flood protection on newly annexed properties. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. This is just our annual flood protection special assessment project for newly annexed properties and that became legal in 2024. There were three different areas, all were within the future special assessment area of their original flood protection project. I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Bean?
Moved by Bean, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Osowski, further comments? Quick question?
Yes.
I've asked in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Marine, how much future special assessments are still outstanding for our flood protection?
So we did kind of look at this, on the map, all of the diagonal area is future special assessment. Based on how the land is currently plotted, it'd be like, I think it was 45 million, but that doesn't take into account any roads that would be taken out.
Awesome, thank you. Appreciate it. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. 3.2, Board of Health Committee Appointments, anyone interested in appointing Ms. Harsel to the Board of Health?
I move approval.
Moved by Osowski, second by Berg. Any other comments, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thanks. Item 3.3, Updates to City Code Relating to Criminal Statutes. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Marcus Skidnitschny, I'm the Assistant City Attorney, Assistant City Prosecutor. Majority of these are just to bring it into compliance with the 2023 legislative changes that were enacted. And then there are a couple minor changes to bring the statutes up to date, or the ordinances up to date with the B misdemeanor charge, or the current B misdemeanor charge under state law.
Any questions for the Assistant City Attorney?
Bean, turn over.
Moved by Weigel, second by Osowski. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Pose the same sign.
Motion carries unanimously, thanks. 3.4, thanks for being here, by the way, nice to see you. 3.4, Accept Corps of Engineers Grant, Project 8856, English Cooley Diversion Slope Repairers, Mr. Grasser.
Thank you. Typically, following some sort of disaster, there's different opportunities to apply for grants and things through different organizations. I'll skip a lot of the wherewithals behind that, but suffice it to say, after 2023, we did have an opportunity and we did apply for a grant from the Corps of Engineers to do some erosion repair on the English Cooley Diversion Channel. And there's some photographs in here showing, you know, what some of that erosion looked like. We were just informed last week that we were successful, they accepted our grant application for that work. The nice thing about this program, it is 100% funded through the federal process. They're currently estimating the work at about $890,000, $94,000. Their base work, they would put the clay back, topsoil and seed it. We've had a lot of problems getting grass to grow out in those alkali flats out there, so the city looked at, our initial application was to put riprap in most of those areas. We can still do that, however, the Corps said that, you know, that would be an enhancement that would be paid for at 100% local cost. Currently, that's estimated at about $300,000. We think that's a good investment to stabilize those banks for the long term, so our recommendation is to accept the grant and to pursue the additional funding for the riprap.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Grasser?
I move approval.
Moved by Osowski, is there a second? Second by Bean. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Item 3.5, Material Purchase for Project 8809, Upgrade Lift Stations 24 and 27.
Hi.
Good evening.
This is for the pumps and the valves for lift stations 24 and 27 that we rejected the big, a couple weeks ago, so we're going to rebid that this fall, but we just wanted to get ahead of the timeline, whatever, in order to the materials early. So those will still be installed as part of the project, we're just getting ahead of the long lead time parts, so looking for approval on those.
I move approval.
Moved by Osowski, second by Berg. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 3.6, Downtown On-Street Parking Changes. Ms. Edbertson, good evening.
Good evening. I don't think I'll be as quick as everyone before me, but we'll try to condense it a little bit. So here tonight, in partnership with Dave Karinko and Engineering, just to ask for some on-street parking changes downtown, it's been a bit since we've discussed any on-street parking changes, so wanted to bring forward to committee for feedback, go to public input meeting and then back to City Council. So with that, downtown parking is an interesting balance of shuffling folks through enough to give enough parking spaces available for the different variety of businesses that use the space. So not just intended for a sole business or development, but really how it works on an overall grand functional scale. So part of that that goes with that too is that downtown users will typically walk one to two blocks away from their parking spot to their destination, so there's a bit of it, more of a lengthy time that they'll go and oftentimes not in a direct line of sight between their parking stall and their destination. But that makes the challenge of all-day parking overall detrimental to commercial businesses is all-day parking doesn't allow for those short-term turnovers to occur and for folks to stay because folks are essentially camped there all day. So the vitality of the commercial businesses hinders when we have all-day parking. So we're bringing their request forward at this point because the Franklin is near completion, they're getting ready to open their residential units here mid-August. They'll be bringing online roughly 40,000 square feet of commercial space, 122 residential units, and the development does have 90 underground stalls available to them, but you can tell from those numbers that the 90 isn't going to fully take care of their needs. That being said, downtown has enough parking stalls as long as it's managed appropriately to accommodate the development at that full build-out, so. But that would result in some of the on-street parking changes being requested, so Franklin themselves has requested the parking changes immediately adjacent to their site. Staff is recommending the rest of it, again, on that grander overall downtown functional scale. So Franklin's requesting the 30-minute timeline here on Second Avenue, which due to their underground parking access on that side, ultimately results in about two stalls for that 30-minute parking, but that would be for their quick-loading and unloading activities for their apartment users or commercials. So the theory being apartment users could park, unload their groceries, come back down and move their car to its longer-term space, but still have that direct access for those in-and-out instances. The one and two hour is meant to encourage a variety of businesses within the space. One to two hour can range from office users to quick serve to restaurant lunch hour folks, so the variety of uses there. It does get to be a little bit of a chicken and an egg, do you change the policy prior to a business coming in, hoping to land them, or do you wait until a lease is signed and then react? We have found, and I've even taken a phone call, that most tenants are hesitant to lease with an individual wherever they are if the parking isn't guaranteed. If it's up to a political decision and somebody can sway it and have that subjectivity, they're hesitant to commit to that lease. And so until, that's why staff is recommending the changes prior to all the leases being signed. We know that all-day parking is detrimental to commercial to Franklin, as well as some of the adjacent businesses around, so we're encouraging the request prior to Franklin leasing up the building. We do have some recent tenants in the area, Bolton Bank recently moved in next door as our neighbor. They'd benefit from some visitor parking in terms of meetings and consultations and such like that. Kitzona currently is surrounded by all-day parking, detrimental to their retail establishment, though they have been beneficial, but North Third Street does go all-day parking all the way north. Hub has traditionally asked for changes, particularly for their lunch hour. The adjacent private lot is available to the hub after 5:00. That does belong to the office building there and they do use it Monday through Friday during the work hour. So the hub would benefit from some shifting there in the parking on-street. The office tenant users on the corner of Second and Third do utilize the all-day parking currently, and so their needs would significantly change with this, interfaith shifts from all-day to two-hour. And we have heard from them concerns about where they will find parking and what options they might do there. There is free parking in the Riverboat Lot, there is capacity in the ramps, there is adjacent all-day parking further north, so we do feel like the changes would be beneficial greater, even though they would have a negative impact at this point with the change. The other changes that would be happening would be, the Hive has, or Formal, Formal Herald, they needed 30 minutes for your bill paying, the Hive has transitioned to more office users, and so they've been struggling to find visitor parking for their one-and-a-half-hour meetings, one-hour meetings, and so two-hour parking would accommodate their needs. And then there are some high school teachers who traditionally do, just on personal observation, park here on University, there is capacity in the ramp for them to accommodate some means, as well as some all-day on-street parking farther, I guess west it would be on Second, so they would have an impact there. Students traditionally tend to park in the lot on University Avenue, there is a lot of students shuffle right in front of the high school doors and things like that around the Hive, but traditionally on University, we've seen, again, from personal observations, they do tend to stay in the lot, so. The dotted lines, I apologize, are what the existing time limits are, the solid being what we'd be proposing to go to, as well as what the rest of downtown kind of looks like. And so with that in mind, requesting your initial feedback tonight, we'll, based on that, we'll go ahead and do mailers for the 30th and host a public input meeting. DDA has been a great partner in terms of advertising that meeting and getting as much attendance as possible. We'll be direct mailing to both property owners and current tenants, they are often not one and the same downtown, just trying to hit all of those bases. As well, it was asked of me today to give a brief description about parking assessments and how that plays into downtown parking. Prior to 2019, the city was issuing parking assessments to downtown business owners based on deficits in the parking budget. They were assessed in order to meet the, make the budget whole, essentially. The frustrations came with that is that it was an inconsistent number from year to year. If we had a heavy snowfall year, they'd get heavy assessments downtown, the next year we'd have a good year, assessments would be lighter. It made it very difficult for small downtown businesses to budget for that, as well as absorb that when they came in high with no warning. So there's consistently been frustrations with downtown parking assessments. We did do away with them in 2019 with the Demers Avenue reconstruction, as that had such an impact on downtown, we put a pause. We've not ever brought it back, we've subsidized the parking fund through different means, but it is still technically on the books for the city to utilize in assessment, but it does come with challenges. We're not recommending any parking assessments at this point in time, but it was asked that I explain what they were and how we've used them in the past, so. Nothing to add. Dave's good, we're good.
Questions from Ms. Edbertson's, yes, Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, thank you for educating me a little bit on the parking assessments. Now, if you were to bring the parking assessments back, would you have to come back to council to ask?
We would, it is part of, it has to be part of the municipal parking fund budget proposal to include what will be assessed out that next year, and there is a whole appeal process and things like that, but we aren't recommending it as part of the 25 budget that you'll hear later today, but we would have to bring that back to you.
Okay. Another question I have is, when residential buildings are built in the downtown area, is there any type of code stating that they have to have a certain amount of parking spots?
No, so with the parking assessment district, that allows us to essentially charge them any deficit if they didn't provide any. We've had recent conversations, so in downtown, we'd have no parking minimum, so to speak, which is a coveted thing amongst many downtowns, just because it prioritizes the building and the taxable wealth of that versus surface parking. If you look at us versus Fargo, you can tell there's a vastly different surface parking difference there. We have capacity in the ramps to make up for it, though. We are growing a little bit farther beyond the ramps now, so that's becoming a little bit more challenging, but we're still within that block area to support, but we could go back to that.
So we allow residential, new residential buildings to be built downtown, knowing that they won't have parking?
We, by code, yes. I will tell you that no development will build it marketably, so there's been a bit of a market capture there. For instance, the Franklin, they knew they were going to have to do some sort of underground parking to support. It's the gap that we're making up for in the ramps or somewhere else, and so internally, we have discussed maybe changing code to require a parking study. We did require a parking study of the Beacon, that's still ongoing in terms of its evaluation with the third building, but we do recognize these large-scale developments, we probably should have a parking requirement, parking study done to make sure they fit overall. Part of what the 2019 downtown parking study did as well as taking evaluation of, I believe they looked at the Quest Block, and if that were to be coincided and built nine stories high, could our system support it? And the answer was yes, it could. The ramps have sufficient capacity, even with the Franklin going online, even with pure development. We have capacity in our system to oversell and shuffle as long as we're managing it appropriately. So we've fallen back to that parking study to say we have capacity. Should we get another half-block like the Franklin? I think staff would highly recommend a parking study be done, just because perceptions are catching up to reality and things are getting tighter. I wouldn't say they're tight because we still have enough parking and we're still able to accommodate, but staff recognizes, should we get a half-block?
But Franklin put in 122 residential units and only added 90 parking spaces, so where would even the rest of their residents park, I guess? And then I, if I was going to rent from Franklin and I didn't have an underground parking spot, I wouldn't be too happy that everywhere around my home is one-hour parking. I guess I don't find that very rentable, but that's, I guess, not my problem. I guess one thing that maybe, like, do we have to change all of these roads to two-hour parking?
We'd recommend it, we only went a block off of the Franklin. A lot of industry professionals and probably Bolton and Make would agree, like, two blocks probably is even more accommodating and things like that because that one to two block is our service area. We're leaving all-day parking north of downtown in front of the residential, but it's starting to mix there, so I professionally would say if we didn't do at least one block, we will struggle.
Well, Franklin will struggle, correct?
I think so, but the building is built, and if we have vacancies downtown, we'll struggle, and it gives a different perceptual vibe if we don't fill that, and so.
Ms. Edbertson, I'm sorry, just to, for point of clarification, there's a mix of residential and commercial, and I think what they're proposing is trying to find a compromise for both. We're recognizing that, yes, they're putting in 90 permanent spots underneath, they're hoping that there's room in the ramps, the parking lot across, that's on the wet side of the dyke, for the permanent residents, and then allowing the local roads to be used for the transient people that are coming to shop at those stores.
Right. What have the other businesses said about this? Has any, I mean, obviously Franklin has an opinion, but, I mean, there are a lot of other businesses that are going to be affected by this, and like, is, I'm assuming that people after 5:00, it's no longer two-hour parking, or what would that be?
It would be like the rest of downtown, which is permitted or restricted.
Like nine to five? What are the hours?
I believe posted time limits are seven to five in downtown.
Seven to five. I mean, I don't really see, in my, in my opinion, I don't really see a problem if, you know, Franklin really wants those roads changed to one-hour parking, but I really feel that now we're affecting a lot more than just Franklin, just because of Franklin's request. And so I don't really understand that. I think it also, I understand that the codes, you know, for Memorial Village 1 and 2 are different, but they overbuild also and don't have enough parking spots. Does that mean that something like this is going to go on down in Ward 2? I mean, are we going to continue to allow people to overbuild? And I understand there's a difference between downtown and more residential-type areas, but I, I don't see why we're just making accommodations for Franklin because they chose to build such a big building. But that's my opinion, thank you.
Ms. Frensky?
So Ms. Osowski brought up a point about other businesses, and I know Jill from the DDA is here, and I know she's kind of the eyes and ears of local downtown businesses. Would we be up for hearing from Jill's perspective, if she wants to talk?
I would be more than happy for somebody else to talk. Hey.
Good evening. I will just really echo what Andrea's been saying, and I think to answer your question, Ms. Osowski, the desire from the businesses surround it has been something that's been requested for a number of years. The perception is that there is no parking downtown, and we really feel that once we try to make it very, very similar on both sides of Demers, the north side and the south side, where it's two-hour parking around all the different businesses, retailers, restaurants, that we have some consistency and it makes parking actually better for our small business community. I talked to Joe Schneider from the Hub and Joe Blacks, and he has requested this for several years in a row, and I think the thing about Franklin is that now has pushed that conversation even further, that we really do need this. We have a retailer on this end of town that doesn't have any options for two-hour parking, and there's, there's really not a great parking option for customers to come and visit that store. Kitzona was mentioned, and I think that the news came out today that they are no longer going to be open, so we do see that this has a significant impact on our current businesses that are on that side of town. So as much as I appreciate this feels like it's a Franklin decision that's being made, it actually is something that's being requested from the other businesses that are down there that do see that customer facing opportunities every day. Now, I think that we might hear from some of the businesses that don't have customers that come in and out every day, and it's more of an employee parking thing, but we do have a completely underutilized parking, lower level of the parking ramp, or the parking Riverboat Road parking lot that is completely vacant at any point in any day, all year long, that is about a two-minute walk from where this location is at to get to those buildings.
Do you think it's going to be confusing if, you know, we change all of this to two-hour parking, except for Franklin's little corner, they have a special one-hour parking? Wouldn't it make more sense if it was just straight across the board, two-hour parking then?
I could see where that would be the perception, but given the fact that this will be, they're trying to make the accommodation between both the retail and the residential, the one-hour does make sense to me. Specifically, what, what we were kind of questioning was how do the other businesses feel around it, and.
What business are you from?
I'm from the Downtown Development Association.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Did that help answer any question?
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Frensky, yes?
So today, I had a lot of conversations about this today, so I physically drove to Lower Riverboat Road. I parked and I tried to leisurely walk to the corner of Third and Second. On the way there, it took me a minute 54. To get back to my car, it took me two minutes and four seconds. I totally understand, it's a beautiful summer day. I have heard complaints that the winter, the stairs aren't always the best, but I know there's changes coming, there's better lighting coming, and I think if the city could better, do better with snow removal, I understand two minutes in the summer is different than two minutes in the winter, but it felt like two minutes was a reasonable request to walk.
Just to chime in on the lighting comment, lighting has actually just been updated, so we've increased the lighting in that area, we have been working with Excel, so we've got that walkway, particularly from the wall to Third Street, we've got a couple of extra lights there, as well as a couple of additional lights to light up that walkway as well. So especially in those winter months, it's, there'll be a lot more. We have been working with Excel, so we've got that walkway, particularly from the wall to Third Street. We've got a couple of extra lights there, as well as a couple of additional lights to light up that walkway as well. So especially in those winter months, it's, there'll be a lot more light out there than there's been in the past.
And then Andrea, I was wondering if we could see for next meeting, so this map shows a portion of downtown. If we could see all of downtown, what it was, and then another map of what it's proposed, so we can compare?
Yep.
Because I know south, south is, has always been two-hour, almost all of south.
For the most part, yeah. There are some thirty-minute, thirty-minute makes sense for like, for instance, City Hall has thirty-minute. We have utility billing and building permits that need quick in and out, so we're, we have thirty-minute in front of ours, as well as there's thirty-minute in front of the high school, just for pickup and drop-off throughout the day, or quick consultations into the office. We've seen thirty-minute in those instances where they just need to get in and get out, but traditionally, most of downtown is, is two-hour.
How about part, or tickets right now? I've heard that ticketing isn't really enforced anymore downtown?
We're working on that. We've had some, yep, there's G C.
Nice to have a team.
There's been more aggressive ticketing this summer. Basically, you're always going to see that in the summer. Now, we have two interns that work for us. Once the interns go away, then we're sharing basically one and a half CSOs trying to do everything. It's two CSOs, but they're usually in municipal court. The one is from eight to noon. That's where you start to see a little bit of a decline after the summer hours. So if you think there's been an increase this summer, that is correct, because the interns are out there and they want to make sure they're doing a good job for us, and they are in multiple areas, but this is one of their functional areas that we've had them focus on.
Okay. How else?
I will quickly add to that when we get to the budget discussion. We are proposing some differences with enforcement, just trying to prioritize that. I don't know if it's worth talking about here or not or later, but we do know the CSOs get pulled in very many different directions. Interstate parking has the ability to take on a dedicated enforcement. That can be something discussed later as part of, it is part of our budget proposal for '25, is to shift enforcement from a CSO to interstate.
So interstate could possibly, I'm kind of jumping subjects for a brief second, but when they, when a street downtown is blocked off, say, for Farmer's Market, then interstate could do the ticketing and towing at 6:00 a.m. on a Saturday?
That's part of our goal, is to adjust those hours. CSOs are traditionally Monday through Friday, seven to five. We have some service gaps in the ramp, just off-hours with Olive and things like that. We could balance between two interstate employees, a greater full-week opportunity.
I just have a couple more questions. Is there a study or anything that says how many people, obviously, nobody lives in Franklin yet, but does everyone have a car? I know, like, a lot of students live downtown.
No, which is traditionally why downtown, the no-parking minimums is kind of ideal, because it can be market-based. Even in our parking assessments, should, should we assign a charge, we go half a stall per unit, so we assume it's, we don't assume it's a one-for-one.
And my last comment is Central drop-off. So I, I had the privilege of dropping off for many years at Central, and some parents pull over, some parents just, just stop. It's chaos. Is there, I know there's been some studies done about making that a little easier or safer?
I'm going to make Dana answer that.
So we do have a project currently in the works to reconstruct North Fourth Street in front of Central High School. You're probably going to be seeing a documented CADAx come forward to City Council in the near future, along with plans and specs. We're hoping to get that bid either late fall or early spring for construction next year. And some of the things we're looking at doing on that one is similar to what you've seen on Demers, Third Street, Fourth Street, where we're implementing some of those bump-outs, but I think we're also looking at, particularly in front of the high school, you know, how do we accommodate the busing in that area, as well as the parent drop-offs? So that'll be yet to come.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Veen?
Yes. Ms. Edwards, I think I heard you say we have adequate parking downtown. I mean, the past studies have shown that, obviously, we've evolved somewhat. Do you see a time when we'll, we really need to do a new study?
I, I do. We've been kicking around, do we wait for the water treatment plant to kind of get further along in its concept, tie that in, with some of those discussions, just to get the most effective bang for the bucks, so to speak, if we are going to do a parking study? I will say, too, that the 2019 parking study didn't really highlight on-street management and what our best practices should really be in terms of evaluating, you know, outside of a large-scale new development, if a business comes and has a specific request, how we should kind of monitor that. So I do see value in a study update in, in years to come. We're just trying to figure out the best time to do it.
And then maybe being a little bit selfish, looking at the parking specific for City Hall, you've got the thirty-minute parking, you know, right in front, across the street is the two-hour parking, and then on University, you're trying to do that. Sometimes people come here for meetings, and they got to figure out a place to say as a part of official city businesses. And of course, they're going to be utilized by others besides just those coming, so it, it looks like it's about as good as it's going to get, but it's not perfect.
Right. I do think the on-street changes, most, I may not be well-liked after this meeting, but most City Hall employees park along University Avenue in the all-day parking, but we do have capacity in our surface lot to handle any employee parking that would need to be relocated, you know, off the street. What we're running into now with visits, even folks coming from Public Works, is they're trying to figure out where to park, and we have very limited visitor parking in the City Hall lot directly adjacent to City Hall lot. Not everybody knows that city staff can park in the surface lot, mostly because you have to have a hangtag to park there. Public Works isn't assigned to hangtags, they don't park there on a day-to-day, right? But they still come to the building for meetings. So these two-hour changes will also benefit our own visitor and meeting accommodations.
Ms. Edwards, so public meeting July 30th? What's a success or failure at that meeting? What are you?
Oh, there's going to be a lot of feedback, so I mean, that's always a success. We'll compile all of that feedback and bring it back to you for an update, good, bad, or otherwise. It's all good information and evaluating, and bring it back for you to absorb and, and act on on the 5th.
Further comments or questions or thoughts?
Mr. Veen?
Yes. Mr. Weigle?
Ms. Edwards, I think I heard Ms. Nelson talk a little bit about, I just got the vibe that the, the customers are more important than the people that work down there. And maybe it was just the way I interpreted it, but I, I do think we need to look at, you know, we, we're accommodating the Hive and the Herald Building, where we mentioned Kitzona, we mentioned Franklin on Fourth, we mentioned a bunch of other businesses, but we aren't accommodating maybe another building in there that, that also has a somewhat large amount of employees. So how can we get to a point where we have a compromise, where we can implement some of these things, but also accommodate the people that maybe aren't in favor of this?
Sure. And I guess my answer to that is, anything larger than two-hour, we try to find an off-street space for, whether that's capacity in the Riverboat Lot, the capacity in the ramps, or, or somewhere else, just to support the greater functionality. But like Jill had mentioned, there are some office users that have employees that are using the all-day, that this would be a significant change for. I think what we're proposing is a compromise because there's capacity within a block at the Riverboat Lot, but that's simply just our recommendation. We'll provide you all the feedback and the comments, and, and go with your direction.
Perfect. And just so we're clear, none of this will be implemented until it comes back to City Council at a later date?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Edwards, how, what percentage of the city's parking lot is used on a daily basis?
Currently, it's hard to say right now, because a lot of folks are using University Avenue for on-street, though that has changed a little bit with contractors using it, as well as we, right now, have the school district lot open, so some folks park there. So I would say we have capacity in the lot, and certainly capacity to shuffle, but I don't have a, I don't want to go count cars, because then they'll know I'm doing it, so...
Ms. Lonsky, from the Riverboat Lot to which corner was two minutes?
So I, from Riverbo, River, I can't talk. From the Riverboat Lot to Third and Second, it was a little less than two minutes.
How, how much longer do you think it would be to get to City Hall?
Well, I also parked in the ramp and walked to the same location, and that was under four. So I'm guessing it would be under four. Which I understand on a beautiful summer day is different than on a winter day.
Okay. Well, I want, I personally would love to get the feedback from the folks that live and work downtown. So anybody want to, for the sake of keeping this going, make a motion on anything? Mr. Veen? Yes, sir? Recommendation, second by Lonsky. Is there further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post the same sign.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Weigle, did you dissent?
I did.
Thank you. Mr. Weigle and Osowski dissent. Thank you. Awesome. Moving right along. Item 3.7, Grand Valley pedestrian crossing study update by the Forks MPO. Mr. Weber, you're making a career out of coming to council meetings.
You need a Weber here.
Yeah, right?
President Sandy, members of the council committee. My name is Tyler Mansky. I'm with the Forks MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization. Behind me is Blue Weber with Bolton and Make, here to talk about the Grand Valley pedestrian crossing study. On the agenda, it's listed as an update, but really, this is more of an introduction. This has not been brought to you up until this point, so this is a great opportunity to give as much feedback as you possibly can on a new project that we're really excited about. Just, I know we have some new members on the council, and I'm a new employee over at the Forks MPO, so just a quick overview of what an MPO is, I thought might be prudent. Any urbanized area over 50,000 citizens is federally mandated to have a metropolitan planning organization, and really, what we do is help coordinate transportation between local governments and transportation authorities to help ensure regional cooperation with all the transportation planning. That's just a really high-level overview. We'd love to answer any questions that you have at a later time or during the presentation, especially with acronyms, because we love our acronyms, so please, please ask questions, but ask them to Blue Weber, who, so on behalf of Bolton and Make is going to go over some of the things we worked on so far. Thanks.
Thanks, Tyler. Thank you for having me, by the way. So like Tyler said, I am here to talk about the Grand Valley pedestrian study. So the, the name behind this, being the Grand Valley pedestrian study, is that it is around the Grand Valley area. For anybody who's not familiar with that, that is a development that Crary has been working on for a number of years, of, I think, 119 single houses with also a park, and then very close by is some potential developable land by both the school district and the park district. So I, really, the idea here is what I'm here to get into. So to just kind of start, the reasoning behind this study and the reasoning why we actually pursued this study is to look at this entire South End development area. So to really, our goal is here to be proactive, reduce any negative impacts to potential businesses and residents, so really trying to lay out that transportation network, primarily with a heavy focus on pedestrians, but lay out the entire transportation network for this area. So if you look at the map, you can see that this stretches all the way down roughly to Merrifield Road and back up to 47th, and then actually cuts up into the Belmont area. So trying to look at a very large swath of land, some of which has been developed, but some of which is still greenfield and has some plans. So for us, one of the important things here to look at this wasn't just looking at it with the lens of transportation, but also the local context. So we partnered with CPS, Praxis Strategy Group, CPS and Praxis Strategy Group. CPS being, Mike Korman and his team has really done a lot of the site work out in this area, so for us, it was important to know kind of what the future plans are, kind of how things have gone, and also just kind of understanding the current context. And then Mark is basically the best in the business when it comes to talking to people, so it was really important for us to partner with him, make sure that we're having those really intelligent discussions, high-level, making sure that we know what's going on in the area. And a really important part of this process is making sure that some of the lessons learned from surrounding developments that have happened. So maybe some of the pedestrian enhancements that haven't happened, that maybe if we could go back and look at, we would maybe take with a different lens. So this was a fun approach, to basically start to look at those things very proactively, as well as the project timing here, lining up with what I was here to talk to you about two weeks ago with that SS4A. A lot of the components that come into this study are actually going to be potentially fundable by the SS4A, so good opportunity for us here. So our process starts with really looking at the existing conditions. So this is both the transportation network, all of the different studies that have gone into this area, the historical context of this area, as well as kind of what the future needs are. So this is one of the things that we're really in the background, working on right now, our team is. But really, what's exciting is that we don't have a ton of that work done yet. We're, like Tyler said, we're here early. We wanted to make sure that we got in front of you to start talking about it, and I will say, we'll be back again two other times. So our project approach is really kind of how we're approaching this entire thing. So as you see, we're here in summer. We've really gone through and started to define those goals and objectives. That's in collaboration with our steering committee, which we meet with on a monthly basis. So we actually have another steering committee meeting this week with some of those people. And then over the next couple of months, you'll see me out engaging with some stakeholders and community members. From there, we start to identify our issues and concerns, try to move a little bit faster through this. But as you can see, we have a pretty rich timeline. You will see me back here around that fall timeline to ident, when, when we're at that point of identifying potential projects and prioritization. So with that, we did start looking at those existing conditions, not just at a transportation lens, but at a land use lens. What kind of developments are happening, as well as what does this area look like for the next 10 to 15 years? So obviously, we know that there's already, the school district is here with South Middle School. Discovery Elementary is very close, but then we also know that there's a proposed potential, another elementary school, as well as a Christian school out on that end. So lots of different numbers here, lots of different information, just going to keep flying as fast as I can for you. But the situation with engagement is a really interesting one, that it's tough when you don't have a built-in audience. With this being a greenfield, it's not like we can go directly and ask people who don't live there yet, what is going to be happening, what they want to see. So it gives us a really neat opportunity to talk to the different stakeholders around the area, as well as talk to the surrounding neighborhood, and make sure that we're listening to them. And so our engagement strategy really starts with project interviews, talking to the landowners, talking to the developers, advocacy organizations, the school district. From there, we are going to be over at the french fry feed, really kind of demonstrating some of the information we've heard, and kind of giving people an opportunity to tell us what they think of this. We know that that's just a really good opportunity to get to everybody in the community at that potato bowl where everybody's enjoying french fries. And then with that, in October, we'll be sitting down with the Discovery PTO, hearing from the parents of the students in that area. How is it that you get to school? What are some things that you maybe would like to see different? For us, that's just going to be a really good opportunity to almost check in on our own processes. So from there, you're probably asking, okay, well, what do we do with a study like this? So we start to identify some of these projects and implementations. So this is where the really smart people behind the scenes start to come in, and they start to come up with some actual designs and things like that. So we'll be doing everything from 3D graphics and conceptual layouts. Those are some of the things that you will see me back here in mid-fall, and then again in December, to kind of show off some of those. And so some of the examples of what those can look like is everything from enhanced pedestrian crossings and treatments, mid-block crossings, any sidewalks and shared youth path, shared use paths, connections. So I, lots of different ideas here, and that's where the overlap between this and the SS4A are a really good advantage for the city. Like I said, trying to move as fast as possible for you, but pretty quick timeline, so this will be wrapping up in December. So you'll see me back here again in October, and then you'll see me back here again in December. We're pretty early on, so wanted to get out in front of you, give you an opportunity to ask questions. I actually got to have lunch with Mike on Saturday, and so we talked a lot about this project, and it's one that I was excited to be able to come and talk to all council members. And so for us, it's important to open that dialogue up and let you know that we're here to talk about this project, and maybe what are some of the things that you want to see in October, and then again in December. With that, stand for any questions.
Questions from Mr. Weber? Mr. Friedel?
Just real quick. Does, can the result of this end up in, you know, added lanes? I know 60 seconds, you know, two small lanes, one, one in each direction. In other... In other communities, take like Idaho for, there's, for example, you know, we talked about this, right? They, they built a lot of the cool stuff in the town and all these nice to haves and then didn't, the infrastructure didn't follow, which this, I think this is great, right? We're doing the analysis and the traffic is horrendous there. And so I think this, you know, the study helps prevent that, but I think the roads need some work too, to, you know, multi-lane.
So it's, it's going to be an important piece of it and it's, it's why we really did, the MPO looked at this as a pedestrian crossing study. So though we're not going to be making any recommendations on road widths or lanes, we are going to be making recommendations on what intersections and what maybe the safest methods are for the pedestrian crossing. So that's, it's something that I think is great as an opportunity for us to work directly with the engineering department as things go on. Yeah.
Further questions? Pedestrian crossings, obviously you're going to be looking at the future schools. I think we've struggled coordinating with schools in the past to make sure that we have the right drop-offs and generally speaking, like Discovery, we probably should have put some underpasses or things, or elevated roads, had we thought enough in advance, so that we could get the kids on bikes to the schools as safely as possible. So those would be things that I'm hoping to see in the end result.
One of our big goals on this also is the collaborative nature here, being able to really bring city staff, city council, as well as school board and school boards, school district staff together, so that we're on the same page as this is moving on. So when we're coming up with these recommendations, we're not doing it and then one of the other parties is saying, whoa, where'd that come from? And making sure that we're all around the table together.
Great, thank you, Mr. Weber.
Of course.
And the MPO, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Very good, item 3.8, Ultra Indoor Sports and Aquatics Complex Children's Museum Update. Mr. Freeland?
Council President Sandy and members of the committee, the whole. We have an update for you this evening and you're going to see, from the design team, you're going to see Adam Davidson and Zach Bezek from both GLG and BRS, they're going to talk about the schematic design. Oliver Finnamans here on behalf of McGuff and that's part of the McGuff slash Construction Engineers CMAR team. Alex Larson is going to be here on behalf of Bolton and Mink and they've done a traffic district plan that would incorporate the children's museum, going to look at various concepts and then Marion Storace is going to go over the financial plan, so, and then we'll give you updates along the way. So number one, thanks for the city council allowing us administratively work on this, what we've discovered along the way with, you know, this $100 million plus project, nothing would be happening without the city of Grand Forks. And so thanks for allowing us to work on this quality of life investment that's going to help the community and, and the region bring visitors to us. With that, we've made some real progress on the schematic design. You're going to see Zach and Adam, we're going to talk about the schematic design. You're going to see a schematic design that goes really back to the baseline. The baseline of this project was a turf. It was eight pickleball courts and it was a 50-meter aquatic complex and that's really what we're going to demonstrate to you today. We did look at a 300-meter track, that is not included as any of the alternatives. We also did look at hard carts and currently right now, we don't have, we showed up to four wood hard carts for basketball volleyball. You will not see that because we can't fit it within the scope of this particular project. On the, Marion will kind of go over the, what we think we can bond up to $100 million for this facility and that will maintain this facility over time and also help support the capital financing of the Alara Center. And we continue to work on that ultra gift of $10 million and the mayor and I are working on sponsorships of the various facilities for up to $4 million. That would be in addition to that, so those are still what we're working on. I think the Bolton and Mink site master plan, we looked at various options and you're going to see option five looks like it's the best option and, and Alex will tell you reasons why we've, we've gone after that site. And then the site's support infrastructure, Adam's going to come up here from GLG and he's going to show based upon that option five what the support infrastructure looks like. And he's going to show you a bunch of numbers and mainly those numbers are in water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, parking lots. We're proposing to fund this like a strategic growth area where the city would support all the various infrastructure components to serve both the children's museum and the Ultra Indoor Sports and Aquatic and then also the BMX track that's already out there. So we would propose to use those funds and we'll, you'll see some of those numbers that we would support all three of those facilities. And then the children's museum, you'll see in a slide on that is that they are leaning towards this site as opposed to the Choice Health and Fitness site. And so we'll discuss that as we move forward. And then the park district has an operational budget, we'll talk a little bit through that. And then finally, the UND agreement and because we don't have the 300-meter track incorporated in it, it'll be really important that we capture what we're doing in the Pollard Center and along with, two of the new facilities are building, so we'll talk a little bit about that. So thanks, we've made a lot of progress from last year when I think it was like 64% of the people voted for this facility along with preserving the Alara Center. So we've made a lot of progress on hiring GLG as the architect of record. We've hired McGuff and construction engineers as their CMAR so that we can get some early estimates. We've held some user sessions, workshop, we're at 70% and really what we're hoping to do is come back here in later September with a project to move forward with final design. And so we really want your feedback this evening because what we bring back in September, we really aim to go to final design and start construction next spring. So it's kind of, kind of an exciting time of this all coming together all at once and you're going to see an early look with that. So with that, I'd hand it over to the architect, architectural team that I named and they'll take it off from there and we'll go for a little while and, and if we can get through all the presentations and then we'll do Q and, Q and A at the end if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Good evening.
Good evening, thanks, I appreciate the introduction. Good evening, council members, so I am Adam Davidson, Principal Architect at GLG Architects. Up here with me today is Zach Bezek, Principal Architect of BSR Architecture. They are our partners on this endeavor. And also with us is Oliver Finnaman with McGuff Construction, so they are our CM partners as well. On the screen right now with you is just a real quick project schedule update and kind of where we're been, where we are today, where we're going. Todd gave a nice summary there in the overview where that's at. We're in the first phase of the project, what we call schematic design. So this is a phase that is involved with understanding the physical characteristics, understanding program requirements, size, the adjacencies, what needs to be in here. The best way I like to put it is about right size in the building. What we're looking to do is validate what is important to the project goals, to community members, to make sure that aligns with the budget and with the schedule. And so what you can see here are some of the few things that we have done during this phase, including workshops, client check-ins. And what's very important about this is being able to meet with the stakeholder committee members that we have helped develop to ensure that we are going down a path that is addressing the needs of the community, addressing it in the right way and right size in the project, like I said before, and meeting those operational goals, meeting those budgets and also the overall schedule. Now, there's also a lot of things that happen at the same time and one of a few things I want to show you is going to be some of the operation analysis that the park district is working on. Also a few things too with the traffic engineering master planning. Also too, we're very early still. One thing to look at here at the top bar is going to be where we're at today here in 2024 and knowing where we got to get to in quarter one of '27, so there's still a lot of work to do yet. But again, as I mentioned before, our goal right now is to really develop a project to present to you and the council member in September with the intent of moving forward with the next phase of schedule in about September as well. So a lot of work to do, but also a lot of work that has been done. Moving forward, I'm going to turn over to Zach here, who is going to talk a little bit about the program and planning. Like I mentioned before, the schematic design phase is really trying hard to right-size what needs to be in this facility and to make sure it works with the project budget, make sure it works with the user groups who are going to be operating it and make sure it works with the schedule that we have. So there's a lot that goes into trying to validate what it is in this facility that's going to make success at the end of the day. What we have here is going to be a project of about 218,000 square feet. Zach will go through some of the different program elements about that that makes the project. Like Todd said before, we've gone through a lot of iterations. And we ended to do that to make sure that we really do our due diligence and really test what's going to work for this at the end of the day, what's going to be profitable, what's going to be operationally successful for the community. And so these are going to be at a high level, the different spaces that we have, that we can run through, kind of what's included and then we'll go into some of the floor plans as well about how this is starting to take shape a little bit. So with that, Zach will turn over to you.
Thank you, Adam. As Adam mentioned, I'm Zach Bezek with BRS Architecture Principal. I'm going to walk through both the program and the plan, where we're at and kind of turn it over to Oliver and talk about some of the costs. So what you see on the screen now is a detailed breakdown of where this base project is at currently, we're at that 70%, schematic design level. We've been working with the McGuff CE team for the last month or so, really refining some of the budgetary costs of the various program spaces, both what's in the base concept as well as some other program elements that we've studied in the last couple of months. And this is kind of where it currently sits as within the overall budget of the project. Administrative space, just around 4,500 square feet. Our main turf fieldhouse area, which is just under 100,000 square feet. Sports training and fitness areas of around 5,000 square feet. The pickleball fieldhouse area, pickleball space around 20,000 square feet. And then our natatorium is our indoor aquatics pool and that includes spectators and support spaces, locker rooms and so forth, just under 40,000 square feet. Multi-use classrooms, team rooms, training rooms, rental space rooms, party rooms is around 3,000 square feet. And then all the support, the glue that holds it together is just about 50,000 square feet, which is building support, services, storage, et cetera. From a plan concept, what you see on the screen is the current concept. From an orientation standpoint, the entry on the south is on the south side, on the bottom side of the page. You will show, look at a kind of master site plan to what's the relative context of this project on the, the site just south of the Alara Center in a little bit here, but from a general sense, you approach and enter the building on the south at the main entry. As you enter the building, there's admin to the right, the first thing you see as you come in the building, once you're in that center core, you really get views into the large turf indoor space in the north, to the northwest, the pool and aquatic space to the northeast and then the pickleball area to, to the west. And this identifies those kind of four major elements of the project, the, the 50-meter indoor aquatics, the indoor turf space, which we'll highlight here in a second of what's all provided for included in there, and then the eight-court pickleball space as well. On the far end, on the left or west side, is a zone for the indoor sports training space that I mentioned as well. All the gray boxes are the adequate storage that we've identified for each of the major elements and athletic and sports spaces within the facility. The large darker blue volume in space in the middle represents the support space for the aquatics, locker rooms. Currently, there's two locker rooms, men's and women's, and then a high school locker room space as long, in addition to that, staff offices and then family changing, unisex changing spaces. There's also identified on here, which we'll talk about in a second, some additional alternates within the project we're studying. The McGuff CE team has been helping us narrow in the budgetary costs, but we still are exploring some desire alternates that stakeholders and user groups have been asking for. Just at a high level right now, those include looking at three different kind of pool options in addition to the base 50-meter competition pool, looking at a pool that would allow multiple temperatures of water in the same 50-meter configuration and then another pool configuration that would have a secondary separate instructional pool to have two temperatures of water and two bodies of water. Also exploring the expansion of the pickleball area to have more rough space for tournament play, expansion of the sports training area to increase their needs and desires. The idea of looking at a deep dive well for the aerospace program within the competition pool and then some other incremental amenity increases like diving and some better mechanical systems within the pool space. On the second level, it's really a mezzanine, not a second level. This incorporates mostly spectator seating, seating within the building for the competition pool, just under 900 or 1,000 seats and then additional mezzanine space for viewing into the indoor turf area as well as lounge space for in-between activities and events. As I mentioned just previously, here's a kind of breakdown of what is all provided for, the ability to be housed within that turf space. The program elements include the ability to have a full indoor high school football field, lacrosse field, one field hockey pitch, the ability for indoor soccer, high school soccer, dimensions vary, but it's approximately a high school soccer field size. There's the ability to have two indoor, infield, baseball infield as well as two softball infield, not full fields, but just infield play. And then the ability to have some U9 soccer fields as well or smaller. And then finally, there's inclusion for a sprint track, a 100-meter three-lane sprint track. So that kind of gives you a high level currently where we're at with the 70% layout of the sports facility. I'm going to let Oliver here talk about kind of where we're at budgetarily from a cost perspective.
Good evening, I'm Oliver Finnaman, Director of Preconstruction for McGuff. So now that you've seen kind of the schematic layout of the building, we'll go over the projected costs for the project. So what we've done over the last month is put together a cost model for the project. At this level of design, it's, it's really high level and we're referencing other similar projects to develop similar costs for what we believe this facility will cost. So as the design continues, we'll continue to estimate, get more specific and then we'll get to a point where we can establish a guaranteed maximum price. So just a takeaway is the, the cost information we're going over this evening is, is more at a high level just based off of where the design is at. So to help with the right sizing of the building, we broke it into the kind of four programmatic elements that you can see on the screen. Each highlighted area is represented by the estimated construction cost of the project. So starting up in the upper left-hand corner would be the indoor turf facility, which is about $40 million. Moving over to the aquatic space and the mezzanine above on the second floor, that's about $44 million. Down into the admin and lobby space is about $5 million and then the eight pickleball courts are about $7 million, you know, big picture, but we wanted to, you know, break this down into these four pieces to understand how much each program contributes to the overall cost of the building. Just a breakout of the mezzanine being in the aquatic space. So the costs that I went over, just went over and that are up on the screen, we refer to those as the construction costs. So those would be the costs that McGuff CE would be contracted for. So doing, doing the math between the four programs, that gets us to about $96 million. Inside of that $96 million, because we are at a very high level from a design standpoint, we don't have as much information. There are a number of contingencies that we have in there to help make sure that the, we're not looking at the project through rose-colored lenses, that there's still a lot of, lot of work, a lot of design work yet to be done. So we carry a number of contingencies inside of our estimate to help offset some of the things that we find as the, as the project is designed and then obviously, we can't, we can't lock in pricing right now because the project isn't fully designed, so we know that costs will continue to increase the further out that gets, so we're carrying a escalation contingency in there. So between the three contingencies that we have in our estimate right now, those total up to just under $14 million. And as the, as the design develops further, the contingencies drop down as we get more concrete cost data. So just to, just again, the, you know, almost $14 million of contingencies right now are included inside of the $96 million, they're not in addition. The second component of the project costs are the soft costs that are the kind of intangible pieces. And here, the, the soft costs that we're, we're showing are the costs for the design and engineering fees and then there's a owner contingency that, that an owner will carry throughout the life of a project to, I guess, allow them to perhaps make modifications if there's some unknown circumstances that we run into with the project. Very, very advisable to carry a contingency throughout the design and construction phase to help offset some of those surprise costs. So those two totaled up are just over $11 million. So you take your hard construction costs, you couple them together with your soft costs and that'll give you the project cost. and that'll give you the project cost. So right now, we're estimating that the total project cost of the facility is about $107 So I think Adam's going to come back up and explain some of the alternates that are being discussed that aren't included in that estimate or the estimated cost that we just went through.
Yeah, thanks, Oliver. Appreciate that. So as part of making sure we find a pathway to budget and understanding what those constraints are, one of our risk management strategies that we do is work to identify alternates to the project that align with the project priorities the stakeholders have identified. We've identified at this point times seven alternates that we feel would make the project successful, align with project goals, as well as what we want to do operationally with the project. Now, understanding those priorities, we want to make sure that we're being fiscal responsible with what is going to make the project successful. So that's why we presented a base project that accomplishes those things from the turf perspective, aquatics perspective, as well as pickleball and other multi-activity uses. We also acknowledge that there are other program requirements that we would like to instill to the project that does have a benefit to the project, whether it be operational or even just an overall quality of life to the community. So those seven alternates in order we talked about and Zach too mentioned a little bit is, we do have a couple aquatics. Number one is looking at a 50-meter pool that has the ability for an adjustable floor and dual temperatures. What's important about this is that that allows for additional enhanced programming that the operators can use, the partnership can use, in terms of swim lessons and other programs. Now, it's not going to be that next step, which is going to be a separate pool, and that's going to be alternate number two, but it's taking baby steps to identify, how can we be successful with the project and find that pathway to budget? So that was one way, a strategy we identified is that we can do is enhance those program offerings for aquatics and swimming, but also maintain the competition pool with the 50 meters. Number two here is going to be adding that four-lane 25-yard instructional pool. So that's taking the next step. And the reason why it's the next step is not only it's the pool itself, it grows the building. And so at this stage, again, trying to find that pathway to budget, we want to be very cautious what we're doing in overall size of the building and the programs within it. So again, that's that next step. So again, it's another risk management strategy and how we can identify, what would that cost be, what does that look like below the line? The next one here is going to be diving platforms. So we do have springboards in the project, but again, another enhanced program for competitions would be having those three-meter and five-meter diving platforms. When it comes to pickleball, one thing that we looked at is going to be the clearances that we have for pickleball and understand the different types of tournaments and organizations that they have, and knowing that going from a tournament, or excuse me, a court size that maybe is more geared to recreational, but can hold tournaments versus a size that can definitely hold maybe larger tournaments. There may be a revenue factor, there may be a cost factor with that. There's also a cost factor in having the building grow. So again, that's another alternate. Sports training, another very important programming element that the park district has also for the community, how do we enhance that? So we're tracking that as another add in terms of what that could possibly be enhancing the offerings for sports training. You can see a few things there in terms of weight training, biometrics, et cetera. Aquatics, we do have a deduct alternate here, so this is looking at something that's possible in terms of how the environment operates. There are many ways, of course, in how we look at this, so there are some best practices in terms of how the aquatics environment operates. It's a very important and critical part of the design, but we are being cautious about what are some things that we can take a look at, again, in that pathway to budget. And then the last one, too, in terms of coordination and talking to some of stakeholders, including you and the aerospace, we are looking at a program feature that allows them to do some of their, some of their training in terms of space training and looking at some of those opportunities with a deeper dive well. And again, that's another alternate, and maybe that's something that they can contribute to as part of their commitment to the project. But again, it's another, again, pathway to budget strategy that we have there to see what's below the line, but what is possible enhancing the overall offerings of the facility. So with that, again, as part of this partnership and team with the McGuff and CE team, we want to find out what those values are. It's important to be able to plug and play with those values and understand what that is, so we have a complete picture of what we can do here, and it gives the city and our community flexibility in understanding, how can we put together the best project possible? And so I'll let Oliver explain here just a little bit and some of the, some of the costs here about all those, of the alternatives that we have, but Oliver, anything to add to that?
No, just the biggest thing, the biggest takeaway here is that what we're looking at right now, these dollars are not included in the $107 million. As Adam said, this gives, you know, pushing the budget, there's a, you know, we'll continue to track, refine our estimates as the design develops and dial these in a little bit closer. But the, the project alternates that he just went through, we've got this representative pricing to go along with each, each one of them. So I think, I think I'll probably just let you glance through them rather than, rather than read through each one, but yeah.
I'm sorry, a quick question. Is it safe to assume that if we don't do these while we do the original project, that these numbers would be higher if we come back and add them on later?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So just to go through an update on the financing scenarios that we've been looking at, just have a few slides here, just as a review, the 3/4% sales tax vote in November, the results of that, of course, extended and expanded the use of that 3/4% sales tax. That roughly generates currently about $10.5 million. Public showed support, not only to continue the support of the Alara Center, but pivotal for this project to move forward. We currently do have roughly $20 million left outstanding on that Alara Center debt, which returns in 2029. There is a call provision on there, though, the end of 2025, that we're looking at incorporating into this financial plan. We've been working with bond advisors as we look at what is our borrowing capacity on this while still balancing any coverage ratios, required reserves, bond rating considerations, ongoing and future capital needs. So all in all, as we're working through all that, we've come to determination that we have up to $100 million in borrowing capacity. With that, we are looking at some interim financing. Mike Vattenstol in our office has had a lot of conversations with lenders that, and there is interest out, out there in the community to help with this interim financing mechanism. We would look to have a draw provision, draws we go through that construction period of time, and ultimately have permanent financing then at that call date of the Alara Center bond at the, in the 2027 time period, and then move forward from there. What we do have is a plan to issue a RFP for that interim financing mechanism once we do get 100% schematic design to move forward roughly in that September timeframe that Todd referred to. So with that $100 million, we do project sales tax to be at roughly, coming in at $12 million annually by that time. That would be split then, 1/3 Alara Center, 2/3 for this new facility, for both the borrowing, the bond payments, as well as the ongoing capital. That interim piece, what that helps us to do is, we have this time period where we can still take advantage of the favorable interest rate that's on the existing debt with the Alara Center. At the same time, we can grow that sales tax, hopefully have a little bit more funding than we believe in that reserve to also help out with the plan. But with that, we are looking at that $100 million. We have incorporated the Ultra dollars in there as part of the plan, as well as continue to solidify sponsorship funding opportunities. With that, I'm going to turn it over to, I believe, Alex.
Good evening. I'm Alex Larson. I am the project manager with Bolton &amp; Mink, working on the master plan and traffic and parking study. And I'm just going to take this time to kind of update everybody on where we're at and kind of give a timeline of where we started and where we are today. So when we started the master plan, we met with the three stakeholders that are looking to relocate or build at this location. And meeting with these stakeholders, we kind of developed goals and values that each site had, that they wanted to bring to their site, that would make the site special and unique to them, and also provide all the components that each site was looking to have. Through those goals and values, we kind of highlighted where they all overlapped, and some of the main overlaps was pedestrian safety, access to parking, some of those outdoor recreation and flex spaces that they all wanted to incorporate that we really used to kind of drive our master plan and help to develop some concepts and move forward. So we initially developed kind of five main concepts, and in this development process, we kind of took all the components of the site and moved them around just to see how they all worked, how they interacted, and how best to make the site as a whole cohesive. So we came back and had a checkpoint meeting with stakeholders, and there were a couple main factors that really drove the master plan to the next steps and kind of where we ended up with Concept 5 today. So some of those key factors was, one, BMX track not moving. The feasibility of moving that facility and kind of the functionality of the BMX track in that location, it is really best suited in that area. The other main component was, is there is an existing utility easement on the south side of the property. And initially, it was thought that these utilities could be potentially relocated, we could relocate that easement, and then use some of that space for some of these facilities. And next-up conversations with both the city, city staff, and those private utilities became very apparent very quickly that it was not going to be, we were not going to be able to relocate those. Couple driving factors there. One, the timeframe would not allow us to keep moving forward for any of these components to keep moving forward. It would drastically affect the timeframe for all of these facilities. Two, there are both a major waterway and wastewater trunk line that runs through those, and the potential impacts to the city's infrastructure and just functionality was very crucial in driving forward the master plan. So option five then really was kind of where all these pieces both worked within the existing city infrastructure and utilities, still complemented the existing infrastructure and facilities on-site, and then allowed both the Aquatic Center and the Children's Museum Industrial Nation Park to have a space and bring in some of their main design components for the site. With this, we, right now, are just looking at it from a very conceptual level, and then from here, we'll move into next steps and really breaking down these pieces and how they all, they all fit together and some of the other major infrastructure. But this is just developed right now and to give kind of a space and an area for each of these facilities to exist. So this just kind of shows roughly the acreage and the size that each one of these components would have within the site. And this is just another version of kind of that Concept 5, and just mostly just moving around parking and then some of the other flex spaces within the facility. And then same thing, just kind of giving a rough idea of how much acreage we're allocating to kind of each site to get these pieces to all work together. The other aspect of the master plan is the parking and traffic study. So right now, we are looking at pretty high-level parking data. We use ULI data to kind of generate this parking analysis that uses mostly GPS and mobile devices to kind of analyze who's coming to the site, who's using the existing sites, and then giving an average over the days of week and weekends. And then we also just used similar-sized facilities and type of facilities within the region to generate roughly what those facilities on average are using for the parking, to come up with a comparable parking that demand for our site. Another component of this that we are working with city staff and planning is the idea of shared parking. There is a lot of parking out there. It is kind of a sea of parking lots, and, and so we are really being creative in how we best utilize some of the parking facilities that are already existing in site and still allocate enough parking within the new site as a whole. Now that we've kind of honed in on where each one of these components are going to be located on the site, we're able to take the traffic study also to the next level. So that is still in the works at this time, and we'll better analyze how traffic is coming into the site, how it's going to access all these components, and then be leaving the sites at all times.
Thanks, Alex. So when we talk about the, the change of the site, the change of the program and things that are happening with the Children's Museum BMX reading on there, there is quite a bit of site development that we need to take a look at and how best to support each product, making sure that we understand the needs of the infrastructure, whether it be utilities, whether it be roadways and parking, and what does that do? We also want to understand what are the costs associated with that, too, as well. There's a lot of development that's going to be using and sharing each other, and so to assist the city, using the work that Alex and her team has done, we put together a conceptual estimate of what some of those site development costs would be. We've divided this into really six main categories. This first image here, this table, is going to be a summary of what those scopes are going to be, what those elements are going to be in terms of developing the entire site to promote not only the sports complex, but also the Children's Museum and the BMX track as well. So we have, again, six categories. We've broken that down to, again, this is very high-level, very conceptual. One thing to note, too, this is separate in terms of the dollars than the costs that we showed you earlier about the sports complex. I just want to make that clear, these are separate values and that these are not included within those costs that we shared earlier. But this really gives us a total picture and breakdown of what the potential need would be to finance those development costs to support all three facilities on this, you know, really this district and this kind of regional destination site. This also includes some of those other soft costs in terms of financing legal fees, engineering and construction, as well as contingency, too. So this is at the very bottom, a full value number, a total number of what those would be, again, early on, conceptually, and again, based off of the work that Bolton &amp; Mink has done in some of those images you just saw with option five. Again, we broke this down to really six categories, general site development, stormwater, water distribution, sanitary collection, roadway and parking, and parking does include really landscaping as well as part of that. Again, this is going to be a cost allocation to construction type for those six categories I mentioned, starting with the direct cost and of course adding on those other soft costs in terms of contingency, financing legal, et cetera, to give us a total cost value. But this helps us understand what those are depending on the type of funding mechanism that made the city want to use to support development of this site. Furthermore, we broke this down by project type, and the way we broke this down by project type was utilizing the space allocation by land area, as just presented by Bolton &amp; Mink and Alex just showed, in terms of what we have for the sports complex, which is a GF ASAC at 31.8%, and we're on the table, table three. We also have the Children's Museum, shared use, so that's going to be a lot to do with parking, right, in terms of infrastructure, roadways, and how we're sharing the use of that, maybe some landscape features, and also to the BMX as well. Some of the things that we are considering is how to best support them, too, that are already, you know, near the site, adjacent to the site, in terms of roadway access and parking, and maybe other future amenities, too, in terms of sanitary and other more permanent structures that maybe want to be utilized on the site. Table four does exactly the same thing, but what this one looks at is the BMX in terms of just understanding what the roadway and parking would be. And so working with our partners at A2S or Civil Engineer for the project, we put those together. So we can see that the BMX could possibly affect some of the funding depending on what they would do not only now, but also in the future, too, in terms of utilities and some of the infrastructure improvements. This does not include the stormwater, so we do take into account what we need for stormwater retention, basically a regional stormwater retention for the entire site, which would be about one acre. So that's not included in this allocation, but is pulled out and be separate as well. And other than that, the total area that is in allocation is about 21.7 acres. Again, it's the area that you guys looked at with the Bolton &amp; Mink layout. After that, I'll turn over here to Todd, should we have the update?
We have representatives here this evening from the Children's Museum. I think right now, subject to city council approval of some of their requests, they prefer this site shared with the other two facilities over the presumed site over at the Choice Health and Fitness site. We also looked at, we've looked at some options around that five-acre site. It's about $1.69 million. We use the Danks land purchase for the per-acre cost of that facility. Because that, because that site was purchased entirely, including that last portion from Danks, from the Danks family, is that was purchased with the, we'll call it the Alara Center sales tax. What we're proposing is that the JDA would reimburse What we're proposing is that the JDA would reimburse the city. So when you look at the Children's Museum area, that around five acres, that would be JDA property, so it would be separate from the Alara Center sales tax. So we don't want to mix that in with what the voters approve. So that's the one move that we have on here. The other thing is the city or the JDA in this case would want to own the land. So we would propose a land lease to the Children's Museum. One of the requests for the Children's Museum, we've attached the existing agreement that goes for Choice Health and Fitness, but obviously if we continued on this path and into September, we would change the location to this. The Children's Museum would like to see a minimal land lease payment and regarding the land, so that would be one of the requests with regarding land lease. The other request is for the support infrastructure, special assessment that they would be exempt. And so we, I talked previously when we started this, you know, we've allayed all the where the various components would go towards water, wastewater, stormwater, the transportation and parking. We would assess those to the various facilities, but the city would pay for that support infrastructure for all three of those facilities. And so that would be treating them, if you continue to move forward in a similar fashion to both the BMX and the Ultra Indoor Sports and Aquatic Complex. The other thing the, the Children's Museum themselves are going to work on is to ensure that they have about property tax exempt status as part of operating their facility. Mr. Halyers here from the Grand Forks Park District, the Executive Director. They've gone ahead and we have the detailed budget that's in your, in the, on the agenda item, but just to summarize, they did look at the budget, both revenues over expenses, they worked it with the users, they also hired an outside consultant to help refine what those budgets are. If you look at revenues over expenses, the net operating loss is estimated to be about a little over 361,000. And one of the concerns they have is that, you know, we said we would try our best to make sure that there was no property tax increase to operate this particular facility. And so what we've looked at in the various line items is that there's a water utility bill, there's the building insurance, that would be the city building, no matter who operated, and there's some storm removal costs. And so essentially if the city took on those three expenses, plus or minus, it would be a break even budget. So that would, what we propose as we, as we move forward, number one, we need to, and in September, we would be back with your feedback with the Children's Museum agreement if we continue down this path of locating it on this facility. You would end up with a park district final agreement on operating this facility, revenues over expenses, and they would be in charge of doing that. That's the pathway that we're moving down. And then finally, we have to work on the UND agreement and Mr. Gostad and I have met with UND officials. And I think it's even more important now that we really need to leverage the UND Pollard Center and specifically the track facility. And so what we've generally agreed on is that there already are users that are using the Pollard Center and along with institutional partners like the school district and park district, but mainly the users. And so they have agreed that what is going on currently, that we would memorialize in an agreement regarding the Pollard Center and they would commit to the Grand Forks community being able to use that facility, whether it's for the users, for the park district, or for the school district, that they have agreed to do that. The other thing is you guys well know that we helped support the UND softball complex to get across the finish line. I know not all of you agreed, but I think now that you look at what it looks like today, again, thanks to the city of Grand Forks to get that across the finish line, we want to incorporate that into this final agreement so that whether it's high school teams or middle school teams that we have use of that particular softball complex since we helped finance the construction of that facility. And then finally, we had the Memorial Village, right, outdoor turf and you can see there's some new turf that they've put in there. And then my understanding, next year they're going to redo the outdoor track and so we'll have an outdoor track that we, so those are the three facilities we're going to work on with UND to capture current usage and future usage so that we can incorporate that and really have be a complimentary agreement to what we're trying to build south of the Alara Center. With that, with that council president standing, we stand for any questions that you guys may have.
Yeah, Ms. Linsky.
So I'm really stuck on when Julia Rigg made a presentation about the economic impact of a basketball tournament. It was the biggest economic impact of any event we host. I feel like this doesn't take into any consideration any tournaments. The turf facility doesn't have any seating and there's nothing about how else the turf can be divided. Have we thought about economic impact of other sports tournaments in the winter? We live seven months in the cold, so it would be great to give people to Grand Forks.
Councilmember Linsky, we have talked, I mean, that's why we're doing the project. We're doing it for the community itself, the quality of life, and we're doing it for economic development. We can only afford so much and we're the only partner other than All True and, but we have taken that in consideration. So if you look at the, the water complex, that has up nearly a thousand seating for tournaments, whether that's for-
Just for swimming, right?
Yep. And the other part of this, and I'm going to ask either Zach or Adam to come up here, there will be like movable bleachers that will go around the outside of the turf for spectators and also you'll have viewing at the pickleball. So there will be viewing for spectators in those areas and, and we certainly hope that we have not only day-to-day pickleball, but we do have tournaments. And then with this multi-purpose turf that we do are able to host tournaments in that area, so that we have thought of that. The thing with the hard courts and if the mayor were here, you know, we really want to do the hard courts and you are correct, you know, we use most of the gym space that we have in Grand Forks to include at the Alara Center with the two courts. But the thought on that, if we had to let one thing go and add into the future, it was the hard courts because we have hard courts throughout the city that are already being used. And so we're going to have the economic impact of that basketball tournament, whether, whether we added two or four courts here, that's going to happen. Would it be nice to see more activity in this area? That would be great. We probably, I'm trying to think of the number, but we probably need another $20 million to add those four additional courts.
I was talking more about the economic impact of a soccer tournament, an indoor soccer tournament or indoor seven v seven football or I think, I think there's a lot of possibilities with turf and I just don't want us to not think about that. I know the Pollard Center didn't have seating and that was added after the fact too, so I know that was more expensive. I just hope we don't-
Yep. We did, there was a concept to add seating on, on the turf itself, similar to what you see at the Pollard Center. And so that would be another addition to that that would add, would add spectator seating on the turf itself and not just up here in the mezzanine level.
And then can you talk about the purpose of the three lane track?
My understanding is of the three lane track is for, is for the fitness component. So you're going to have this fitness area right here and then also there's for sprinting, for hurdles, for a variety of training aspects that, that was seen as a compromise, at least you would have some sort of track element in it to complement the, the fitness training for athletes. Currently, right now, from what I understand, the park district is using the, the former Shields store that was Ultra fit up for sports performance. And so this would be a better venue to do what they're doing currently in that location.
So before that, that was another question, so that weight fitness area would be subleased to an Ultra to have classes?
It would be, it would be leased to the park district. So currently, right now, sports performance is being done even at that Ultra facility by the park district. And that this space would be for the sports training for the park district and I think would be to be determined if they're going to continue to maintain that, that current location where they are. Are they going to maintain both or are we going to try to incorporate everything into this facility?
Cause, so we already have an existing space that works. Do we need to add another space?
I've been told that we do. There's park district representatives that could probably speak more day-to-day on, on what happens with sports training in that regard, maybe?
Thanks for being here Lisa.
Thank you. Yes, we currently have space that we lease at the Ultra and then we also have space in the Icon and we also have space within Choice Health and Fitness that we are outgrowing. Right now, our summer schedule at Ultra right now, we currently Monday through Friday from about 5:30 in the morning till 1:00 PM, it's booked solid with multiple groups going at the same time. Sometimes we have three groups in there at one time. So we are starting to outgrow so. And some of the stuff that we currently do with some of the hockey teams, we think we can duplicate with the teams in there. So like the footballs and the soccers, we can help give them more than just practice space. We can improve overall athletic development by having that space.
So it'll be kind of a class-based?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's currently smaller than the Ultra space right now, just FYI.
Lisa, before you go. So I kind of feel like, I've felt like this from the beginning, that we're trying to shove as much into this facility as we possibly can and definitely it sounds like we could use all of these things. How, I know pickleball is like the latest and greatest thing, but I also know at Choice, you're already converting some of the basketball courts to pickleball first thing in the morning. Would we get, to Ms. Linsky's point, would we get more bang for our buck enhancing the track and making sure that we have enough seating for tournaments? I mean, $7 million, we could do a lot with $7 million. I'm not, I, I don't know. Would we be better off not having the pickleball courts? Because there's lots of indoor hard courts, we know that. Mr. Veillon already mentioned that today.
Yeah, probably. I think part of the reason why the pickleball courts were originally put in there was because we did a feasibility study, it was kind of a high priority, so I think that's why they're in there, but could they be added on in the future? Potentially yes. I, I don't want to say yes or no, but-
No, I understand. It's probably not fair to ask you that question.
I also think it was kind of a red flag when you said we're, we're taking a space, we're going to move to a smaller space, but that space is already overused. That seems kind of a red flag.
We would have to utilize both, we would still have to utilize the Ultra space.
Okay.
Unless we made this a little bit bigger, but-
Mr. War, more to add?
Yes, regarding the pickleball too, you know, we've looked at a variety of options and a couple of things to remember with the pickleball is that when we did the vote in the fall, that was a main component of the feasibility study, so I think a lot of the pickleball community went out and voted for that as they did other things, turf and things too. The surface in there compared to what's at Choice Health and Fitness is, we have a wood floor where this would be a hard court surface similar to tennis, which is more conducive to tournaments and things, playing tournaments on a hard court basketball floor, the ball would tend to skid a little bit more than it does on a tennis surface where the ball is more conducive to playing pickleball for beyond recreational play and trying to draw tournaments in. So that's, that's kind of the reason behind the pickleball. Yes, we've looked at a variety of options and things there, but again, that's kind of the, what was presented at the time, so.
Thank you. Ms. Osowski, I think-
If I could add one more thing?
Yeah, certainly.
I think the other thought was with the hislop going down, we were going to lose the aquatic complex and my understanding is that there also would lose the nine pickleball courts that are currently in hislop. So that's how it really got in and we got to replace what we're losing in the hislop and that's really how it rose to the, to the top.
Sure. Ms. Osowski.
I guess, well, I have a lot of things to say, but my first comment is I don't understand why the city of Grand Forks has to pick up the slack because UND decides to demolish their buildings, you know? I did look through the agreement, there still really is no agreement, just based on good faith still, so we still don't have any kind of written agreement between us, the park board and UND on utilizing all those facilities. And here we are then, again, thinking about adding things with our taxpayer dollars and they're state funded, I'm sure they have plenty of money, with our city tax dollars just to compensate for things that they're ripping out and I don't like that. I don't know if pickleballs are fat or not, but I think that over $7 million for just pickleball is a little excessive. Also, you know, we're about, I believe we can bond for $100 million and right now we're at 107, so just taking out the pickleball courts would even put us around our budget. I would like to see us lower than that, but also I would like to see the project be a good, well-constructed project and so I don't know really about the cost. So the UND contract was one, the pickleball courts. My other thing that I have an issue with is I, I do not understand why we are going to let this Children's Museum nickel and dime us. We have already pledged $10 million towards the Children's Museum and now they're suggesting a minimal land lease. We're going to basically deal with all the infrastructure, we're going to have to maintain that property, you know, with the, with the parking lot, the beautification, removing snow. I know it might not seem like a lot of money, but I mean, this is money that we're putting towards a nonprofit and I, I don't understand that. And, and I think if we would even knock out doing our research on adding the Children's Museum there, maybe we could get the cost of, of our sports facility that the voters actually voted on. No one voted on the Children's Museum and we've already pledged $10 million. How much more money are, is the Children's Museum going to get out of Grand Forks taxpayers? I, I do not think we should be involved at all. All right, we lost the vote on the $10 million, or I lost the vote on the $10 million, but that, that should be it. They should be able to stand on their own and if they need this much money from the city of Grand Forks, I just don't understand how this could be a good thing. If they can't even meet their fundraising goals to build a Children's Museum and now they're just relying on us, I mean, at what point then, so we put in $10 million, they're basically tied into, you know, other city buildings and then what happens if they can't even like pay for their maintenance costs or operation costs? Then am I going to see the city, you know, you or the Children's Museum back up here saying, you know, well, we can't do this, we need more money? And then at that point, just like the Alara Center, we're going to say, well, we're too far in now, we might as well bail them out. I disagree with putting the Children's Museum on our infrastructure and being a part of this. If we want to sell them land, I, I would maybe consider that, but I, I think it's just, we're getting way too deep into the Children's Center from just the project that I'm looking at, it's well over budget. I don't know where the city of Grand Forks is getting all this money that we can go over budget on the aquatics and the turf facility and then still shell out more than $10 million to a Children's Museum. It, it seems ridiculous and I do not support it at all. I did not support it when we decided to do the, the traffic study in there, including the Children's Museum, because that costs us more money also. I mean, at this point, how much money have we already spent to research this stuff for the Children's Museum? I don't know, I want to, it was, what was it like $20,000 that was added on to that study? I'm not sure, I would have to go back and look. I, I think I asked that question before. I'm very, very concerned about this Children's Museum and us putting it, we're, you know, out by the Alaris and, and kind of tying it into this project, I think is going to leave us in a bad spot in the future and I don't think we should be supporting them. They should be able to stand alone and if they can't raise the money, then it shouldn't be built. Thank you.
Further comments, Ms. Burr?
Yes, I was just looking at the revenue for the Aquatic Center and I just want to make a point and express some concern that I, I want to make sure that it's affordable for people to use because- for people to use, because there's a lot of great things that we have in our Grand Forks community. There's just a lot of people who can't afford to use it. And so I just want that to be considered.
Further, Mr. Veen? Yes, sir?
Well, thank you. Um, first of all, I'm excited with the presentation and the information we have. I tell you what, unfortunately, it probably have twice as many pages of questions that I don't want to get into tonight. So I would really welcome the chance to do that. Everything that I'm looking at for contingencies, the ceiling heights, the mechanical, electrical systems, I mean, the, the details that are going to be behind this are important. How we're handing FF and E, um, and, and everything from turf to building or ceiling heights. All of those things are factors for what we're trying to do here. Also very concerned about, uh, expansion capabilities of what we're going to do. I know it's, this is expensive, but it will never be cheaper than it is today. It's only going to get more expensive. And you got to look at what we are getting, the bang for the buck. What's, what's, what do we need to have here and what can we potentially plan for the future or in another location as we do that? So I'm not going to really get into all of that, but I would like to spend some time digging into it a little bit more, because I'm looking at the contingencies. I know you, I'm glad to see you have estimating contingencies for, for being built in here as you go from schematics all the way through the, the design phases. But you're going to have contingencies for construction and you're going to have contingency for owners. And I know you've identified that. It seems like a lot, but what I've seen lately is that goes pretty quick too. Um, so I, it's more rightsizing it to get all the things in that we would like to, especially at this location. Um, and then the infrastructure costs, because it, it's not only going to be the facilities as you had, it's the ongoing operation and maintenance, both for whoever is running it and then for, um, all of the infrastructure to support it and how we're going to, to do that. So, um, just, just so you know, I appreciate the information, but it really tweaked my interest in a lot more other areas than what's, what's being presented. And I get back with you on that.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Mr. Fieland, are you, this is just a presentation tonight?
Just a presentation.
No, no action either?
We certainly wish, uh, for further feedback. And I'll meet, we'll meet with any of you with the team here. And, um, probably the next major update, um, is, I think it's July, will probably be September. And if we can, um, we'll try to get you something well in advance so you have time to review it. And then we, we will ask, um, probably late September, that we move forward with, uh, final design on a facility. And we'll, we will ask you to move forward with a, whether the children's museum is in or not. And from what I heard tonight is, even though Councilmember Osowski, um, is, is against, we're going to continue to plan for that to be integrated into this particular facility. And we'll continue to work with UND on that final agreement. So that will all come back in September, along with the Park District Operations Agreement.
Ms. Lunskey?
Um, the children's museum will not be built, right, if they don't meet their fundraising goals?
I think, um, one of the requirements we have is for our $10 million is, is, um, some goals that they have to meet. Maybe I'll highlight just maybe our $10 million. I'm not sure how their, their other funds are...
Yeah, there, there is a provision in the current agreement that they have to provide documentation that they have sufficient, um, pledges or, um, the documentation is sufficient to show that, that with our, the funds that we provide plus their fundraising, that they'd, they'd be able to construct that, that facility. They have to provide that in advance of the city providing any funds.
And do you think the children's museum would ever do, uh, I can't believe I'm saying economic impact so many times tonight, but, but a presentation about what they will do, economic impact for the community?
Yeah, Councilmember Lunskey, I think they have made those presentations, um, previous. And I think even the city council, and I'm sure they'd be, they'd welcome the opportunity.
I think, I think the children's museum would be great for the community. I think it could draw a lot of people. I know Ms. Osowski's not going to cross the road to visit them, but, um, I think that information would be really helpful.
I think if you look at the, uh, there's been a big push to construct children's museums and facilities like that all across the country because, and the reason is because they do attract so many people to your community. Uh, lots of families come, they stay in hotels, they spend money. Um, but if you look at the two children's museums that have been constructed in North Dakota, both of them were basically 100% paid for with local funds and state funding. Um, whereas the folks in Grand Forks who, um, uh, who are dedicating their, volunteering their time to work on this project, they're, uh, spending a lot of time out trying to fundraise, trying to raise dollars locally rather than coming and asking for all of the funding. Um, I, I do however, I have concerns about them being able to cross the finish line, just because the project, every day that goes by, the project just keeps getting more and more expensive. And so I think as a community, if we think it's important, and to, to Mr. Orr's point, when the citizens were voting, um, he, he and I perhaps see this differently. Um, although the, the study did talk about pickleball courts, the folks voted on, um, on, um, some language that talked about building facilities in our community, not pickleball courts, not necessarily children's museum, but it was generic enough so that the funds for our, from our sales tax dollars can be used that way. So, um, I hope that, uh, and I would encourage people in our community to reach into their pockets and throw some money in the hat. Um, as the new chair of the Legislative Committee, I will be advocating for the city of Grand Forks, uh, to get more funding from the state of North Dakota to help with all these facilities, but certainly the children's museum, because in my opinion, they should be treated the same way as Minot and Bismarck. So hopefully we can all get on the same page and, and row in the same direction. Further comments or questions for Mr. Fieland? Yes, Ms. Veen?
Just, just one comment, and it's relative to the, the children's museum. They will not be able to start construction until they have the money to support entering into a contract with a contractor. I mean, you're, you're going to actually have to have the money available to do that, or else you're not going to be able to start. So I, I agree with what you said, Mr. Sandy. I'm hoping that there's other options for, for them to be able to get that funding. Um, but it can't be based just on pledges. You're going to have to have something more concrete than that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fieland.
Thank you.
That was a lot of fun. All right, where are we? Uh, oh, good. Budget time. 2023.9, 2025 mayor's budget presentation. And now handout, handout packet. Mr. Ossed, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. I know it's been a long night. Um, I'll try to use your time, uh, as wisely as possible tonight. Hit the highlights where I, um, think is important, um, but, but brief, um, where we don't need to spend a lot of time. Um, I will just preamble as we go through this tonight. Um, as of even this morning, we made revisions to this document. So everything that's included in your detailed budget binder that's in front of you and some of the attachments will be adjusted, um, before preliminary approval, which is why we didn't give you your detailed document in electronic form till we have those changes made this week. So, um, I'll go through what those changes are as I, as I go through this. Um, but just briefly, um, as we get into this, um, budget presentation, I've laid out an agenda here for you. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the first two items as we already spent much time on July 8th when I was in front of you with the salary plan, uh, general fund. Um, but we'll hit the highlights of the various funds, um, within, within the city here between all our special revenue funds, capital improvement plan, um, enterprise funds. We'll try to summarize for you. And then as stated, um, there have been some recent developments, some changes, and I'm going to hit the highlights, um, for you with that, um, and also talk about that property tax elimination referendum that's out there. Um, and then of course, uh, what's, what's to come with upcoming meeting dates. Um, just very briefly, the mayor, um, he has priorities of people, public safety, infrastructure, capital, quality of life. As we go through this entire budget, um, you're going to just see different parts, um, throughout the entire document that hits these different areas. Um, but like I said, uh, for your reference, there's several slides here. Uh, Ms. Bouvet did a wonderful job going through all this information with you. On July 8th, I'm not going to rehash everything that she, that she had highlighted with you. Um, possibly just to point out, um, the vacation leave accrual, um, that was being proposed would match the state's schedule, uh, looking at that floating holiday as to not increase any cost. Um, and then health insurance, uh, we did have, uh, information, uh, shared with us that came out favorable. And that's one of the highlights I'll give to you later on in the presentation. In total then, uh, it's roughly a $300 million budget. This is broken out by, uh, expense type. You can see, um, in looking at the document in total, um, capital and enterprise funds is by far the, the largest portion, although much of the discussion is around the general fund. That's just 18% of the, of the city's budget in total. And then just by category, um, heavy on, on capital, uh, when you look at that entire, um, budget, just a small portion compared to general fund, when you look at that piece of the pie, um, here in total, 23% is wages and benefits versus what you saw on 8th when I was in front of you with general fund, um, most of the employees are housed in the general fund. And, and when you look at that, break out, that's 78% people in general fund. So I'll just spend a moment on here. Um, we'll go through, um, what impacted this slide, um, later on as we go through changes. You heard me on the 8th talk about a slight mill reduction of .05 mills. Um, we are looking at a couple of changes for a total of a half mill, uh, half mill reduction. Uh, so this reflects that change. Uh, 95.87 mills estimated is where that would put us. And then of course, you can see the graphic there, uh, from 2020 and, and forward, um, the, what the city has done there. Like I said, uh, general fund, um, we're going to get to a couple of changes later, um, that will adjust this slightly, but, um, the basics here is, is the same. Uh, went through that on the 8th with you. Uh, we talked briefly about this franchise fee with the high volume electric rate, um, just holding that at the base, uh, level of 2%. Um, that would still be lower than Fargo's 4%. And then, um, just a reminder how that breaks out with general fund, um, with the primary , um, component, um, like I said, being, uh, wages and benefits, uh, as far as function, very heavy in public safety, uh, streets, engineering, health with general government, uh, the remainder 21%. Uh, we, uh, another area we covered on the 8th, so I'm just going to, just briefly touch on this, but really kind of goes to the mayor's, uh, focus on public safety, capital, uh, with that street equipment, the public safety, uh, reporting, uh, software and, uh, people with the salary plan and benefits. And I'm going to gloss over this because we've already adjusted it since this morning, but we'll get into that more later. Um, so then when we get into the special revenue funds, starting with our loan and stabilization fund, um, special revenue funds are basically just those funds that have a special, uh, revenue for that given purpose. So your loan and stabilization fund, uh, is used to stabilize taxes. We are using this in our six-year projection to help with the costs of our reporting management system, um, labeled RMS here in our computer-aided dispatch system software. Um, the public safety answering port, or referred to as PSAP, is our Fund 2104. Uh, we do, uh, fund this through cost shares with, as you can see on the slide, the city, county, UND, uh, the 911 Fund at Altru. The city's portion is based on, well, all portions are based on the five-year average calls of service, our portion being 56%. And that, um, does come out of the general fund. And then the E911 Fund 2105 is that PSAP infrastructure cost. That's where the, uh, phone line fee, uh, is housed and pays for those, um, that infrastructure cost. Your library fund, no change in, in the levy as proposed here. The library board did meet to approve, uh, their budget. Uh, we also have library capital maintenance fund that, um, is used for their capital items. Uh, you can see on the slide here, 125,000 is budgeted, um, just for some parking lot, uh, facility, equipment upgrades, um, with that Joanie Bequest, um, fund growing to 759,000. That's set aside separately, has not been, uh, spent at this time. And the health grant funds, you can see various programs funded there that flows through our special revenue fund 2146. The street water sales tax fund is that half cent sales tax that was approved in April of 2018. Um, you can see how that breaks out, but basically 60% goes towards streets, 40% to water. We do also have, um, some additional cash on that came in better than budget that we're moving in to our street infrastructure, uh, Fund 4018, 4815. And then Fund 2145, we do have a quarter mill decrease, uh, proposed here in, uh, for the, for the budget, bringing it to 1.75 mills. That's where we, uh, pay for special assessments on city-owned property. Our prairie dog fund, we spoke about this on the 8th a bit. Um, we do show that, uh, those buckets look to be filling, uh, quite nicely. We do expect to receive our full 12 million estimated allocation in 2025. Uh, what we do here is each biennium, we, uh, look to use 2 million for wastewater and 10 million towards street infrastructure. And just briefly, Community Development Fund 2199, that's where you're going to find your CDBG funds. Um, as I go through this, and if there's any handout of highlight or page numbers, we've got that, um, corresponding on, on those slides. Now, the animal control fund, I'll just, uh, hit on this briefly. This had a lot of discussion. Uh, we do have half mills, or half a mill allocated for city impound with an additional 61,800 coming from our general fund. We've had, uh, I believe, a lot of progress with, uh, relationship with Circle of Friends over the past year and, um, have, have, uh, good, good communication back and forth with, between the city and, and Circle of Friends. And then Visit Greater Grand Forks, that's basically just a pass-through. That lodging tax comes in, um, and then goes out for the purpose, uh, of tourism and marketing of, uh, hotels and community. And, uh, that is, uh, directed by Julie Rig. So our Economic Development Fund, um, of course, is our Fund 2163 that gets much discussion. We have 18 and a half percent of that 1% general sales tax that goes here. Uh, we do have a estimate of 3% over 2023 actual. Uh, so some things to highlight here. You heard, um, Andrea speak, uh, to parking, uh, earlier tonight. We do have some major capital repairs or capital maintenance, uh, associated with those parking ramps. We want to make sure we're taking care of that. Uh, we do have, um, some excess earnings in both interest and sales tax that, um, have come into our Fund 2163. We plan on using that and, and some of the cash, um, to move into, um, our parking, city's municipal parking fund to take care of, um, those parking ramps and get the, uh, repairs taken care of. And then going forward, um, we want to make sure we don't have peaks like this, again, going forward. So we would begin to start to set aside a reserve, um, to eventually build that to $100,000 a year for annual capital, um, or if not needed, that year set aside reserve. So we do have, um, a new stream coming out of 2163 to our parking fund for that purpose. But as usual, um, this, this fund includes funding of the EDC, arts, safe kids, uh, special events, human needs. You can see the list there of different programs that this supports. And we already had a lot of discussion about the children's museum project. This would continue that funding, um, commitment that was made with the 2024 budget and, um, future considerations of that site infrastructure cost, um, with this, um, 10 million, um, being part of the plan. So then our police grants fund is 2170. Um, if you remember in 2023, we approved six officers with a grant. So 2025 is year three of that. Um, they're 75% city-funded now and fully funded then in 2026. Uh, our public billing fund is our Fund 2121. Um, no change in mills proposed here. 3.75 mills gets allocated toward, uh, the ongoing needs of our city-owned buildings. Uh, a further, uh, detail CIP, you can refer to the pages on this slide, uh, where you can find that in your binder. This is just a visual. Um, it's a very busy pie chart, so I'm not going to go through it, but you can just see all the different, uh, fund... the different funding sources that make up your capital improvement plan. Definitely what gets highlighted here is wastewater with the wastewater treatment plant. And this just breaks up and gives you a three-year look at all those infrastructure-related costs, including federal, state, local shares, looking at 2023, four, and five budgets, and how that breaks out between your utility infrastructure, your street and infrastructure, your street, and your facilities and buildings and equipment. So then, looking at your street infrastructure fund, which is 4815, we do continue to invest quite heavily in our street infrastructure. When you look at this six-year period, we have 109 million dollars of city cost share funds going into the plan, try to balance that out with the regional construction capacity at the same time. But we do have over 17 million annually allocated to streets, infrastructure on average, much to do with the availability of that, your, your, your gas tax, your sales tax, your prairie dog funding, legacy fund distribution, but still inflation, there costs, there's always increased costs with, when you're talking street infrastructure. Some of the major projects in 2025, we have listed on this slide for you, just to point out, for instance, when we look at the 42nd Street underpass project, we do look to the state's low-interest favorable financing as at least a part of that project for our city share on that going forward. And this just gives you a nice picture of, as we look in that next six-year period, just the different areas of town that we have projects scheduled for. So then, with our flood protection system, that's our Fund 4154, that gets funded by both special assessments on new property. Mr. Sandy, you asked a good question tonight, along with this, what is the capacity going forward on those special assessments? So, you know, just with the footprint, what's ahead? So, you know, that number that Sam shared with you tonight would be, you know, ballpark, but of course, that's over a great period of time. 1.2 million use tax is estimated to come in here, that also helps to fund these needed items. The CIP is shared in your binder for reference, but you can see there what's currently included there with the flood wall, station rehab, English Cooley diversion, your south end drainage improvements, as well as conversation with the Greenway Downtown Project and Riverside So then, your Fund 4800 is really, it's, when, when we speak of the general fund and we fund capital reserve, we do an annual amount and we house it in our Fund 4800. So annually, we want an even amount overall, that we fund all these capital needs for equipment replacement and takes out the peaks and valleys of of when we need to replace that. So, once we house it in here and we go to write the check, we're just taking it from the money that was previously set, previously set aside. So an average utility bill, we use a 4,000 gallon user, just based on local data, that's estimated to increase about 4% wastewater treatment plant. Did I, just want to make sure, okay. Just to take a step back, just so the enterprise funds, just to summarize, high level, our utility bill, we'll get into this more later too, 4%. Wastewater treatment plant construction, we're on phase two, we have 43 and 1/2 million budgeted. And then, we also propose a new drought mitigation fee and fund for geared for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. We do have four cents per 1,000 gallons budgeted here as, as a fee that you haven't seen before toward that project. So then, going into these enterprise funds, starting with sanitation, you can see there how we have the beginning operating cash, our revenue expenses to match at roughly 13 million, that's with a 5% rate increase on this. We'll go through in the end in dollars what all this means on your average utility bill, but basically, you can see there what those cash balances are in the lower left there between what's legally restricted, what's set aside for construction reserve, and then your total. As far as landfill, we look at 3% increases there. So just some of the highlights of sanitation, you can read the slide here, but looking at developing that landfill vertically to extend the life of the landfill, soil treatment pad, landfill software, equipment purchases, you can find more information in your detailed binder regarding this fund. Your wastewater, set up as the previous slide, and you'll see the next couple of slides very similar with the other utility funds, just showing that beginning cash balance, your revenue expense. This fund, we are recommending 3% residential, 4% industrial, commercial, heavy industrial for 2025. And then, as you can see in the lower left there, what those balances are, both construction reserve cash and what's legally restricted for debt. Some of the highlights with this fund, we do have ongoing construction of the wastewater treatment plant, as well as the Grand Valley Highway 81 infrastructure improvements continue, and then epitome, energy, infrastructure planning. I should highlight this, this was on your previous slide as well, but we do have a roof replacement for the public works facility. This came up last year, we decided to set aside funds with the appropriate departments and funds over three years, and then that's set to be replaced in 2026. So then, moving on to water, roughly 21, 22 million revenue expense here, we do have a 3 and 1/2% rate increase recommended with, to balance things out. We do have construction cash in here, which we intend to use through our capital improvement plan, and then you can see the legally restricted debt service cash. But so some of the highlights, that Red River Valley Water Supply Project that I highlighted, we do have a separate fund that we intend to call drought mitigation fund 5350. So we do have the four cents per 1,000 gallons figured here. Very thankful for the legislative intent of that 953 million on a 10-year build approved, 25% local users cost share on that, which we are one of the users. We do look at financing through Bank of North Dakota, or we've been lucky enough to have a state where there's low interest, long-term financing to make that a feasible project. And then, of course, water treatment replacement project moves forward, as well as a lead service line replacement. One of the items to highlight here, we've had a lot of discussions about people that pay with credit cards and the, you know, do you absorb that fee, do you pass it on? Those fees are becoming exponentially quite high, so we've had discussions with the mayor, he's recommending that we do pass that fee on, on these utility bills, and that is incorporated in here. So if this were to be approved, we would make the necessary changes in the software to be able to pass that on, knowing that we always will have other methods of payment that people can make electronically to not absorb fees.
Do we currently do an EFT?
Do we currently what?
Do we process electronic checks?
We do, we do. So, so we would still have means of, yeah, debit transaction or electronic check, so we could take it electronically without having the fee. And then, your stormwater fund, roughly just over 4 million, between 4, 4 and 1/2 million revenue expense there. We do have 11% rate increase here, high percent, but in dollars, you'll see it's, when we look at the monthly utility bill, what that equates to, and then 2% on the flood protection Greenway maintenance. Yes.
Can we talk about that fee real quick? So the city got rid of that fee during COVID, is that right? The 3% or?
Yes, I'm trying to remember the history on that. We've, we've absorbed it for quite some time, it's just gotten to be such, over $300,000 of, you know, that budget is absorbing fees. So if we can, and of course, this is up, this is a city council decision, how you want to move forward, but without impacting rates for everybody, we thought it'd be better, as long as we can offer another electronic means to encourage other forms of payment and control those fees a bit.
So right now, the city writes, absorbs about 300,000 in fees?
Yeah, it's been growing every year. The good thing is, more and more people pay electronically, it really did increase with, with, in 2020, more people went online to pay. But like President Sandy had brought up, there's, there's other ways to make payments electronically without it being a credit card transaction. So we're going to try to encourage that. But we'll get a lot of information out there, there's software changes we need to make, there's communication we need to get out to make sure people aren't surprised by that.
I know personally, like Excel, you can pay electronically for free, you can pay by debit, debit or credit, and you pay that fee, and that really sways you to make a different fee. I think if I have the option to pay credit card, I'm paying credit card, unless I have to pay that fee, then I'll look elsewhere.
Correct, definitely. So moving on then, with stormwater, some of the highlights, it's those regional stormwater ponds and cost sharing on those, Vale Circle Project, very thankful for the federal share on there to make that project, you know, even, even a possibility. There's still a special assessment share there, but I don't believe that project would be moving forward to help that area if it weren't for the federal share on that. The mosquito fund, then, we don't have any rate increases here, we had the recent change in in structure there, but no, no fee increase projected here, and it's looks to be financially healthy. So then, overall, the monthly utility bill would be estimated to go from 87, 98 to 9152, that's on a 4,000 gallon a month residential user. When I highlighted stormwater, 11% fee earlier, what that comes to is 41 cents a month. So that's, but in total, it's, it's, it's fairly minimal, it's about 4%. So then, moving on to public transit, we've had a lot of discussion with this fund as well, just maybe a brief highlight on how the funding shares go there. We have a lot of federal money that comes into both public transit and dial-a-ride. Your general policy is on operations, it's a 50-50 cost split, federal and local, and your capital is 80-20, federal and local. The exception was the building project out there, we actually received 90% federal funding on that. But basically, you can see here, and I'll touch on it in a couple of slides, where we are a little backwards here with expenses being higher than, than revenue, and we want to correct that before, before we get too much further down the road. So we will highlight that a little bit more. And then, with your dial-a-ride and senior riders, our Fund 5600, that same cost shares is public transit, we want to make sure the programs there for those that need it. So in conjunction with public transit, dial-a-ride, we do have some highlights here for you that just shows that ridership is actually increasing over the years, you can see the numbers. But what we have listed in as part of your fee list, and we'd have to do the required public hearings and communication, but we are looking at recommending a fee, fair increase here from $1.50 to $2 per ride on your transit, and then 3 to 4 dollars on, on dial-a-ride. So something to consider as you go through the budget document and for more conversation on that. And then, also increasing the age of that senior rider, 62 to 67. Of course, if you're 62 and need dial-a-ride services, you'd still qualify, but they'll just be reviewing those eligibility criteria. The Alara Center, thanks to everyone that came, we had very good turnout on that with our joint meeting. You can see some of the, the highlights there. They are projecting a shortfall in 2025, mainly due to the timing of convention center upgrades. They've planned their programming around that project for several years, but you can see more detail in, in your budget document there. They do project a profit this year, this year is a very good year of about $260,000. They have, they come into this with financially healthy, they have funds set aside to absorb a year like that. So then, the JDA Fund, couple of things of note here, you can see the cash balances, you already heard earlier tonight talking about a purchase of a five-acre piece possibly for use of children's museum, and then a lease would come from the JDA for that. So this is included in the mayor's budget for that purchase of land, as well as just to highlight the Hive operating expenses, $515,000. That will just go through an administrative review of just operations overall of the Hive and how we want to move forward with that. More detail, of course, and that projection is included in your binder as well. Maybe one other thing I want to highlight here, we do have budgeted collection on accelerated loans that come due in 2025, you, we've got those listed there, so that's just of highlight. And then, the municipal parking fund, you heard about this fund too. We do have, as I stated with the Fund 2163, some money coming in here to take care of those ramp repairs and starting to set aside an annual reserve, so we don't get hit like that in the future. Handout C is going to give you a lot of the detail of what Andrea was referring to tonight as it relates to interstate parking and the plan with downtown parking enforcement, and the reasonings behind a decision for an $80,000 increase there for an additional person to help with that. So just to recap, as you heard on the eighth, we do have the STEP and 75% of the ECI, that total seven point, or 5.725. One of the changes that we've made since the eighth is instead of a .05 mill reduction, we're looking at half a mill. You can see what those numbers are there, but basically, then looking at a median value home, what you pay to the city in property taxes would go from 83 a month to roughly 86, it's $2.83 a month increase based on that median value home of 239,000. And then, the utility bill would estimate to increase $3.54 or roughly 4%. And that does include that drought mitigation fee in those numbers. So then, I want just to get through some recent developments, including, Mr. Veen, you had a good question two weeks ago about what do we do if that property tax elimination comes forward? We put together a few slides of just things that city council would need to consider if that were the case. What that calls for is property tax would remain flat and to be reimbursed by the states or to make us whole based on the 2024 levy. And then, going forward, there would be no clause for inflation, no increases, but it would be held flat. So you can see on handout D, all the funds within the city's umbrella that gets supported in some form or fashion from property tax. Of course, I'm just speaking to the city part, but it would also affect your schools, park, county, across the state. But basically, other than the general fund, it affects the library, transit, public buildings, airport, but you'll be able to see the full listing on that on handout D. What we do have incorporated in our projection, we always project out six years based on what we think the annual growth will be. So if we're to hold flat, what we have incorporated in our six-year would equate to by 2030, like 7 and 1/2 million dollars. So that would be the gap that you'd be looking at, estimated. So looking at, you know, basically, what would, what would we do as a city? So we would look at expenses, we would look at policies and cost shares, we would look at revenues, we would look at what are those impacts. So, starting with expenses, you know, between people, capital, operations, internal programs, service levels, some of the things that we would have to consider. We'd review policies such as special assess and cost shares, we'd look at that allocation of the general sales tax and possibly how that gets distributed, and the impact on external programs that we currently support. And then, revenue streams, we would look at potential impact on existing utility rates as well as possible different or new revenue sources there. One of the other things that I believe we'd just need to monitor is what the impact on city debt would be going forward. So, so right now, we don't have any direct So, so right now, we don't have any directly supported general obligation debt on the books that gets paid from property tax. But we do have the supportive property tax on is all our special assessment debt, as well as full faith and credit of fulfilling the reserve on our revenue bonds with our utility funds. So, the way the measure is, we would not be able to use that backing going forward. You would not be able to use property tax for future bonding. So, that would, that would cause concern. We'd have to monitor that with, you know, bond ratings, interest rates, like going forward, ability to borrow. So then, part of the update that led to the half mil decrease had a couple moving parts. So first of all, when we're looking at state aid, everything we presented on the 8th, we said was in draft form. We constantly monitor sales tax, state aid, how it's coming in. We have made a, a change just based on the last couple of months' collections in the state's projection. So, we have lowered our projections on state aid as part of the 2025 budget. We're currently just about the same as last year on sales tax on a 12-month rolling. We're up 2.81%. For now, I'm going to keep the sales tax budget as we had presented on, on the 8th, which is a 3% increase over 23 actual, but we'll continue to monitor that. But I am recommending lowering the state aid. So then, we did get information on health insurance that we referred to earlier. We originally had budgeted a 15% increase. Bids came in very competitively, with health partners being the lowest at .9% decrease. So what that means for the general fund is about $561,000. The mayor has changed his recommendation based on this and the state aid in combination with a half mil decrease, but that does, we do intend to have a pension insurance committee meeting to discuss health insurance and how the city wants to move forward. And I will just also point out that handout E has some more information for you there. So then, what we're looking at is the impact of the health insurance change, 561,000, our decrease in state aid projections of roughly 300,000. We look to reduce the use of some of the cash that we had brought in here from 353 to 227,000. And then, like I said, that change in, the reduction of mils from .05 to a full half mil reduction there. And that is where we need to update some of your documents that you have in front of you tonight. We'll get those out this week. So then, with those changes, we've included a projection, not just looking at annual, of course, but a longer-term look to make sure we're, we look stable and sustainable going forward with those changes. We do bring in loan and stabilization cash as well as that fire reserve, but we do that, I believe, in a, in a fiscal manner that we, we still project out pretty well by eventually to 2030. We see, we see that we don't need to draw on cash reserves anymore. We don't have additional positions in here, would be a clarification. We do absorb the final of those six police officers built in here. And that, like I said, comes on full in 2026. But with that, some upcoming dates of interest, we do look forward to preliminary approval on August 5th. Once that date is passed, we will get the information to the county along with the date of the public hearing and location of our budget, and we'll get that to the county so they can send out their preliminary tax statements by August 31st. We'd come back here then for a public hearing and final approval of the budget on September 16th, and then finally certify with the county by October 10th. And that is a lot of information. I, as well as, I know all staff members are here for questions now and throughout as we go through this process. I'm very willing to go one-on-one because I hit the highlights pretty fast here tonight, but if you want some time, I, you know, I'm, I'm available.
Ms. Dorset?
Yes.
What, what reduction do we need to get to a qualifying zero increase in property taxes?
I should have run that number, President Sandy. I don't have that in front of me, but I will run that calculation for you and get it out to the group.
Thank you. Any?
President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weigl.
Ms. Dorset, maybe a question for you, miss, maybe a question for Ms. Bavette. We're looking at a possible savings of $560,000 from medical insurance. That's just the city's general fund. How much of a savings would that be for city employees? Because I believe they pay 25% of medical insurance. Is that correct?
Yes, they do. The employee pays 70, or 25%, the city is 75. I'm not sure, Tangi, do you know the change?
It would stay flat.
It would stay roughly flat. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Dorset, didn't we normally use an average of 6,000 gallons for?
We did. That's a very good question. So, we brought up this question this year. Is that the right? It just seemed high to me, just based on, I know, the bill that we pay in our household. And so, we did a cross, we did a, a report ran of all residential within City of Grand Forks, what that average is, and it's just under 4,000 gallons a month. So, that's, that's where we came to that number. So, we're going to use that going forward.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, anyone? Thoughts? I would recommend, if you have lots of questions, which you probably will, one-on-one meetings with Ms. Dorset and her team would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for all the good work. Well, item four, council members for discussion. Ms. Osowski, any comments for tonight?
No, thank you.
Ms. Berg?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Linsky?
I just, I can't stop thinking about Vice President Weigl said, do we prioritize customers over employees? And I think the answer needs to be yes. I think when we're all wearing our employee hat, we have to prioritize customers. I prioritize the customers of my neighbors. I prioritize the customers of people I work for. So, I think the answer is yes, we need to prioritize customers, and I really think we need to work together. So, I hope if people have concerns about parking downtown, that they show up next Tuesday for the open house and they give their input, or they contact their councilperson outside of that meeting, too. Thank you.
Ms. Friedhoff?
No.
Mr. Veen? Mr. Weigl?
No, thank you.
I, I can't argue with what you're saying. It makes perfect sense. People should show up and they should express their opinions. I am pretty disappointed to hear that our people, when we did a lot of work rearranging downtown parking to make parking ramp and that parking lot available to our city employees, to hear that they're parking on the street and taking up the, the all-day parking spots is relatively disappointing, but I get it. I'm human, too. But if we're not fully utilizing our own parking lots, then perhaps we should consider providing spaces for some of those people that are looking for those all-day parking spots off the street so that we can open up the street parking for hourly people. Anyway, oh, perhaps Chief Nelson, is there any chance that, because oddly enough, I hear more about rabbits in town than I want to? Is there any, can, can we, I know, I know you're never going to say that people should be allowed to go shoot them. Perhaps that, perhaps we should provide an avenue, we should pay a dollar for a rabbit tail or something, and people can trap them. I, I don't, I don't know, but if, if somebody has a great idea for what we can do about the rabbits in, in town, even if it's a minimal, easy thing, that'd be great. Any other, anything else for the good of the order? Is there a motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Berg? Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. I forgot. Danny, Danny left the meeting. I totally forgot. Sorry. The mayor's not coming. Somebody want to text Danny and tell him to come back online? You guys, we're still on the air. Let's just call it, and Mike can come back in. Let's call the order, Grand Forks City Special City Council Meeting, Monday, July 22nd, under item one, General Business 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigl? Osowski?
Here.
Berg?
Here.
Linsky?
Here.
Friedhoff?
He's here.
Coming? He's here. Sandy?
Here.
And Veen? We still have a call.
Great. Item two?
I'm here, President Sandy.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, got you.
Did you want to read in item two, please? 2.1?
2.1, update on bid award, project number 8557, Columbia Road Overpass Rehabilitation.
Great. Grassor?
Thank you, good evening. There we go. How's that? This item goes back to, as noted, the Columbia Road Overpass, and recently uploaded here this afternoon, late this afternoon, was, was a staff report with recommendations. So, you, you should have that online now. Just a reminder, the Columbia Road Overpass was a project we received substantial federal dollars for. The project was, the low bidder was industrial builders on the project, and the city council awarded that on, on June 16th. Call it $9.6 million was, was the award. We did have one bidder. That project consisted primarily of really about two-thirds of it is a painting contract. The other one-third of the dollar amount is, is to jack the bridge up, put in new bearings underneath, pot bearings, and, and then some improvements on the deck, some finger joints and things like that. So after the, after the bid award, you know, people are doing their due diligence, they're looking at, at the details of what we have out there, and that involved the team of the, the North Dakota DOT, their engineer, the contractor, you manufacture the pot bearing, city staff has been involved, trying to work out some of the details of how the, the bearings are going to be installed, and then coordinating that with how, how the, how the contractor's actually able to jack the bridge up in order to do that work. Lot of technical stuff's been going on, a little bit crazy here the last week or 10 days because you've got so many players involved in the process. I think we, we have a, we, we have a good path forward. I'm going to say that, you know, we had a good team, especially the contractor, very impressed with the contractor. IBI has been, has had a long history with the City of Grand Forks, and, and talking with them, they definitely have the attitude, they want to continue doing work with the city moving forward. So, we have, we have a really good attitude relative to finding some resolution of the details. Bottom line, we, we do need a little bit more time to, to work through the details of that, but we are facing a deadline. The, the painting contractor needs to get started here really, really soon. So, we've been, again, coordinating without getting into all the minutia with the state DOT. The contractor, even as recently as this afternoon, we had a discussion with the contractor. They are, the, the path that we're recommending moving forward would, and they're in agreement with, would be to, where we have the struggles with, with the beams, has to do, we need material testing to make that happen. So, again, that's out of everybody's control, you know, relative to getting the testing done, which moves some of the other pegs forward. That process is going to need a little bit more time. But we, to, to make sure that the contractor's comfortable moving forward, what we want to do is, is deduct those pieces of the, of the bid that have to do with the pot bearings and the jacking of the, of the bridge. And, and that will allow the contractor then to sign the contract, move us through some of the bureaucratic process with the DOT, and, and allow the, the painting contractor to get going. The intent, then, again, it's a substantial deduct. We, we've worked through a fair amount of the details. We're looking at probably 2.2 to 2.5 million dollar deduct. Again, that gets things moving. We're all understanding that the desired end product would be to get back to about what we have here at the beginning, if that makes sense. It's kind of crazy, but we can't take a path from, directly from A to B in order, because we're going to kind of get into a catch-22 about having this contract signed. So, what we're doing is, is agreeing to a deduct change order to eliminate that hangup, get the process moving, and then come back, investigate with, with bringing the, the components back into the contract. Because from our side, from maximizing federal dollars and things, it makes sense for us to try to, you know, move that project forward, basically under the same scope that we have. But there's a lot of technical stuff. We're talking to some of the structural engineers and things today, and there's, there's a lot of moving parts. If we wait for all that to resolve itself, now we're outside the window when, when the painting contractor is available. And again, that's two-thirds of the, basically, two-thirds of the project. So, without getting into any more detail, you know, our, our recommendation tonight, if you have the staff report up, would be to direct the staff to initiate the deduct change order to remove the scope of construction specific to the placement of pot bearings for City Project 8557, Columbia Road Overpass. And again, we've talked with the contractor, they're comfortable with that, they've got a number, they're not going to try to pull any contract crazy provisions in here and trying to come back and, and get damages and things like that. We're very amicable as to, you know, this will eliminate that work. Worse comes to worse, and, and there's, it takes too much time. We'll eliminate this thing and we'll, we'll end up bringing it back again as a, you know, that component probably as a separate bid later on. So, I think we have the best path forward that we can. Again, this gets to be, as, as we've been talking about it and talked to city attorney on some things, we may also want to, so we don't run out of, there's a window in which a contract has to be signed. Just for contingency sake, I, I would also like to add on the recommendation to allow the contract extension, signing of the contract till August 6th. That gives us an opportunity, if something does progress in between time that's unexpected, that we're not thinking, you know, right now, it gives us an opportunity to get us in front of the city council, just in case. This is, we fully intend, to my knowledge here, based on if council approves this, the contractor will go ahead and sign the contract, and we'll be able to just move all these pieces forward. We'll have to come back for finalization of the change order, obviously, at a later date.
I move approval.
Second?
Move by Osowski, second by Berg. Further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move adjournment.
Motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.